And via Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendation to the Town Council regarding use, land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review which includes no prejudgment of the project. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. No comment, good. For those attending tonight, everyone here. We wish to provide, that wish to provide comments on the agenda item, you may speak to the Commission during the public comment section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign your name and address on the podium there. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hands inside the Microsoft Teams portion. And then obviously with that, your options, you just need to unmute your microphone and then you'll be called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comments, only one person speak to that subject. You'll be granted three minutes. Please identify when we go through and give the presentation, we're going to be talking about both east and west. When you come and make your comment, I would ask that you tell us specifically which one you're debating in relation to east or west, or both, if it in fact entails both that you're making the comment for, please, okay? With that being said, again, thank you for attending. We'll now begin the meeting with roll call.
Chair Trujillo.
Here.
Vice Chair Oars.
Here.
Commissioner Zernico.
Here.
Commissioner Green is not online, so she's absent. Commissioner Egley.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Needler.
Thank you, sir. At this time, what I'd like to do is stand and pledge allegiance in the hallway.
I pledge allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, folks. With staff, I'm going to refer to you for the oath of office for the two new Commissioners, or that were alternate Commissioners to make them Commissioners, and that's Commissioner Neder and Commissioner Smith, please.
Yes, Jeff will meet you down at the podium and we'll have you sworn down there. And I sprung this on Jeff, so he's going to be very right on target, I know he is.
Yes. Don. Get your name. Don Lee, Charlie and Charlie. And affirm I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and statutes of the state of Colorado, the ordinances of the Town of Monument, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner for the Town of Monument upon which I am about to enter. Very good. Thank you, sir. So apparently, we have several people that are in the hallway, so what I'm going to ask, everything is on the mic today, obviously, when I, when you come up and speak in the mic, don't be afraid to be loud, because one of, we want to get it recorded, people are hearing online as well, but we also have several people that are in the hallway here, we want to make sure that they hear the same subject, and again, we're not going over several different subjects across the board. If they're the same, we want to capture the main one and move on, okay? With that being said, obviously, now we have the two alternate members, Commissioner Neder and Commissioner Smith. I do hereby appoint you as regular members for tonight's members, for tonight's meeting, you will be bloating on this issue. Any questions? Perfect. Next item, approval of minutes. From the last meeting, minutes, I proved to approve the minutes from May 10, 2023 from the Planning Commission meeting. Looking for a second.
I'll second your motion.
Hey, Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Oars.
Yes.
Commissioner Zernico.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Needler.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero.
Perfect, thank you, Luke. That being said, folks, at this point, we're going to go into the public hearing and recommendations. This is a request by Monument Ridge West LLC for annexation of 90.98 acres for a known area, or area known as Monument Ridge Number One West, located on the southwest corner of Interstate 25 and County Line Road. The second part will be the request for Monument Ridge East LLC for annexation of 71.01 acres for an area known as Monument Ridge, Monument Ridge Number Two East, located on the southeast corner of Interstate 25 and County Line Road. To that, I defer back to staff for the presentation and we await your presentation.
All right, in the booth with the planning department. So although these are two separate petitions, I will be presenting them both, but in the end, when you're making your motions, you will need to make a motion for annexation and zoning for both, so a total of four motions. So we'll start with Monument Ridge Number One, which is on the southwest corner of Interstate 25 and County Line Road. This gives you a vicinity map showing the location of the parcel. This is a, it's probably very unlegible for many of you out there, but this is the annexation map as it comes through. The key you'll want to see here is that the contiguity for the annexation starts down here at the Town of Monument, and it's an annexation of the I-25 right-of-way up to the property, and that's how we get the contiguity that is required by state statute. Project request, Monument Ridge West LLC, and then they want the annexation and an initial zoning of the property located on the southwest corner of I-25 and County Line Road, this is known as Monument Ridge Number One. Project area is 90.60 acres. Initially, the acreage was 90.98, however, El Paso County requested additional land for right-of-way, thereby reducing the amount of acreage to 90.6. We did consult with the town attorney to make sure that the annexation could move forward, even though we had done the initial notice with the 90.98, and we were told it was fine, you could go smaller, you can't go larger. The zoning is a residential attached RA zone district, and they do have a conceptual plan showing 115 duplex or two-family housing units. The existing zoning on the property is C1 and CC, and this is El Paso County zoning. So to the north, you have the open space conservation zoning in Douglas County. To the south, you have C1 zoning as well in El Paso County, which is vacant, which I believe there's a single family there as well. I will try, I will try. To the east is commercial community, it's commercial services, it's also El Paso County zoning and vacant, and then to the west is rural residential five-acre El Paso County, and there's also religious assembly and single-family residential. Project history, in 2022, an annexation petition was submitted for this property. It had annexation and initial zoning of RA and CC, so the last one was residential attached and had a commercial element at the corner. It was tabled by the Planning Commission in November 9, 2022. There was a public hearing at the Board of, sorry, not the Board of County Commissioners, at the, oh, at the previous Town Council is what we were called, at December 5, and then the petitioner withdrew the application. In 2023, they resubmitted in March, the annexation was referred to the Town Council on May 1 as an information item. The annexation was initiated and a public hearing set by the Town Council on June 5, and the public hearing before the Town Council is July 17, 2023. All of these items are required by Colorado statutes as far as, as far as the process for annexation goes. Annexation review and approval criteria. So the review and approval criteria for annexation for the Planning Commission is different than that from the Town Council. The Planning Commission is required to provide a review and recommendation on annexation applications to the Town of Monument per the Planning Commission bylaws. The bylaws state, "The Planning Commission shall review all proposed annexations to the Town of Monument and make recommendations to the Town Council as to whether or not the annexation complies with the comprehensive plan and whether the annexation generally is in the best interest of the Town of Monument." In regards to the zoning, zoning of annexed land follows the rezoning criteria and process in the code. So if you look at 18.03130 of the code, Section D, 1 through 7 are the items that the Planning Commission or Board of Trustees, which is now the Town Council, may consider when evaluating criteria to consider rezoning applications. Again, this is an annexation of 90 acres, most of it being the right-of-way along I-25. It's an initial reason, or initial zoning of residential attached. It's a flagpole annexation of I-25 right-of-way, which is considered neutral. For contiguity, which is required by the Colorado statutes, the perimeter is 24,948 feet, the contiguity requirement is 4,158 feet, the contiguity provided is 4,292 feet, so it does meet the contiguity requirements of the Colorado statutes. The applicant does plan to submit a metro district and have that metro district pay for the infrastructure and development of the site. The next steps in the development is, this is the first step with the entitlement process, which would be annexation and zoning. After that, it would be the submittal of a preliminary and final plat to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Town Council. After that, it would be the submission of a site plan and construction documents, which are an administrative process. The residential attached, these are the uses that are allowed. If it has a dash C by it, that means it's conditional use. Conditional uses come back to your Planning Commission for review, they're treated very similar to a zoning process. The ones that are allowed by right are religious assembly, open space, parks, and ADU as an accessory dwelling unit, a bed and breakfast, a boarding house, manufactured housing, multifamily, single-family detached, and two-family. The annexation agreement does currently remove multifamily and boarding house from the uses in this list. This is the conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. This is 25 acres, 115 two-family duplex units. Around the perimeter of the property is a trail and open space. They did remove all of the commercial from this development prior, which is different than the one that was submitted last fall. Infrastructure would include sidewalks along Beacon Light Road and County Light Road in addition to all the internal infrastructure that would be required. The water on the west side is from the Town of Monument. They are 16 acre feet short at this time, so they would have to do a phased development in order to acquire that additional 16 acre feet. Sewer would be by monument sanitation. Again, the zoning in the county of C1 and CS do not allow residential development, so if the applicant were to develop within the county right now, they could not develop single-family or any type of residential. The 2023 three-mile plan, as part of the, sorry, as part of the annexation process, you must be within three miles of the current town boundary. The town adopted their three-mile plan earlier this year, so they are within the three miles and are considered eligible. The comprehensive plan for the Town of Monument shows this property as mixed-use, maybe a portion as business-commercial, business campus, so we did a review on both. They are proposing residential. Business campus, there's a long list, but in general, the business campus is just that for businesses. It's a mix of office, research development, educational facilities, there's manufacturing, assembly, fabrication. Some of the attributes and characteristics include, it's intended to provide a tax base and jobs while reducing traffic and commuting distances. The land use category is intended to provide an alternative to the I-25 planned industrial lands. Unlike mixed-use, residential is not allowed, and structure should be appropriately scaled to the lot size, lot configuration. Structure shall ensure views to the west are preserved. Campuses should have one defined point of entry, and circulation is handled internally on the site. Mixed-use is a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience goods, services, and employment opportunities for the area residents. Mixed-use development may include residential element in mix and should address the physical and functional integration of uses through careful site layout and thoughtful design of buildings, pedestrian environments, and streets. Mixed-use development should promote work, live, and play, with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential uses. Usable open space, usable open lands and open spaces, live-work developments, professional office facilities, professional services, medical facilities, groups of shops and services, lodging, convenience and retail, restaurants, public facilities. Some of the attributes and characteristics include, it's intended to provide a tax base and jobs while reducing traffic and commuting distances. Development particularly along the I-25 corridor should preserve views to the west. Centers should be served by controlled access onto arterial collector streets. Development that strives to integrate two or more land uses such as residential, commercial, and office in one lot or within a subdivision. Housing should complement and be subordinate to the primary non-residential use. Developments that include a total cap on allowable square footage of non-residential uses and housing density that can be accommodated by the transportation network. Accommodates easy access to goods and services by foot or car. Emphasis placed on ability to walk or drive and park to access all the services. Small businesses provide services and specialty restel, retail establishments. Well-planned attractive clusters or nodes of commercial development. Spacing between developments and structures is of a dimension or so screened with plant materials that the scale of the development complex, development complex complements the adjacent uses and character desired by citizens. You have clustered onsite parking, residential units that provide a transition between the non-residential and single-family residential, multifamily units that are no greater than four to six units per structure, and you limit lighting to a minimum required for safety purposes, particularly along the interstate corridor.
I'd say the best bet for people that are out in the hall is you can log in online and it'll come through perfectly clear. We don't have mics that go out into this room, so yeah, that's another option you have.
So you could use your phone to register online for the meeting through the, through the town website, and you could listen to it through your phone if you aren't able to make it into the room itself. I hope that helps.
And within the comprehensive plan, we have a community vision. New development should add to, not detract from the quality of life and natural features cherished by citizens. Maintain a balance between developed lands and natural amenities throughout the Tri-Lakes area. Continue to develop and maintain a park and open space system that is linked together by a series of trails and sidewalks. Community values. The small-town feel which creates a sense of community. The quality of life in the area which includes the following attributes: location, views to the mountains, beauty, dark skies, and the natural environment. The school system, which is one of the primary reasons people move to the Tri-Lakes area. Many stated that Monument is a great place to raise children. Viewpoints. Citizens would like to see an interconnected trail sidewalk system for both recreational users and those wishing to walk or bike to school on both sides of I-25. Citizens remain concerned about the views one sees from the I-25 corridor and views from the east side of I-25 towards the mountains. Citizens and area residents are mindful that a broader range of housing opportunities is important to the local economy, many simply do not like multifamily housing. We're going to go into goals, opportunities, and policies based on different topics. The first topic is land use opportunities. Capitalize on the three I-25 interchanges for destination sales tax-producing land uses. Encourage highway-oriented businesses to locate in the mixed-use and defined community centers with shared access. Policies. Encourage the use of sustainable development practices, including site planning techniques and new technologies to ensure that views, vistas, dark skies, environmentally sensitive areas, and open lands are integrated into new developments. Encourage transitions between dissimilar land uses using increased setbacks, feather densities, landscape buffers, native plantings, berms, and mutually agreed-upon transitional setbacks between zones of differing land uses and densities. Allow for a wider way of land use types to meet changing community needs. Transportation opportunities. Provide a system of interconnected walkways and trails from County Line Road on the east side of I-25 to all school sites through to the Fox Run Regional Park. Policies. Reduce the adverse impacts of new transportation corridors by creating walkways, bikeways, and paths along the side of streets, using drought-tolerant landscaping and berms and green street design to manage drainage and storm runoff. Cooperatively plan logical and economical road extensions and leakages. Encourage the development of separated walking and biking lanes from Monument Hill Road through Jackson Creek Parkway. Parks, open space, trails, and tourism. Policies. Place greater emphasis on the dedication of logical pedestrian and bicycle trail connections as part of the subdivision process. Protect the legacy of unique natural features, open space, and natural areas through the Tri-Lakes area. Water and sewer opportunities. Employ strategies to acquire enhanced senior water rights including annexation, purchase, adjudication of non-trabutary water, and leverage of senior surface rights for participation in diversion projects. Water and sewer policies. Correlate water demand to proposed land use when evaluating new large-scale developments and potential annexation areas. Economy opportunities. The development of Monument as a regional trade center was a focus of the 2003 comprehensive plan and has been achieved. This plan provides the opportunity to develop multi-use employment centers that conserve the growing front-range population through the designation of the business campus and mixed land use categories described in the future land use plan element. Compliance with the comprehensive plan. The property is shown as mixed-use and business campus on the future land use plan. The proposed initial zoning of residential attached zone district is not in conformance with the flume, however, staff supports a deviation as the amount of commercial shown in this area is not easily justifiable due to the lack of housing to support it. Known and development would occur on the north side of County Line Road in Douglas County as this is an open space conservation easement. Properties to the east are low-density and likely not to redevelop without annexation in the town for urban-sized lots which require municipal water. Interest of the town. By annexing the property into the town, the town will have oversight in the development. Town oversight can help ensure the community vision, community values, and viewpoints are taken into consideration. The annexation agreement that was submitted and is under review. There was a, in the annexation agreement, it's called a sketch plan, but we're changing it to a conceptual plan. The conceptual plan has been submitted showing residential attached units and a trail around the boundary of the development. This is a conceptual drawing only, and the agreement contemplates future modifications, but does not allow any higher densities. Zoning. The petition proposes residential attached zoning, but they have agreed to remove boarding and rooming house, manufactured house, and multifamily dwelling. Metropolitan district. The petition will be creating a district to fund infrastructure and for maintenance of parks, trails, and drainage facilities. Land dedications. The petition will provide, or the petitioner will provide fees in lieu of land dedication for parks and school. Plans and studies. The petitioner will submit subdivision plaits and site plan applications for town review. Traffic, drainage, and environmental studies, along with utility, wildfire mitigation, and tree shrub preservation plans will also be reviewed by the town. Roads. The petitioner will be, will construct all required internal roadways. The petitioner may be required to upgrade Beacon Light Road from a rural to urban cross-section. Sidewalks will be installed in both Beacon Light Road and County Line Road. And a clarification on this is Beacon Light Road is currently undergoing upgrades by the county through PPRTA. There is a rural cross-section at County Line, and then it turns into an urban cross-section further down, and the urban cross-section is due to drainage only. So there is a potential that Beacon Light Road could be upgraded up in this area as well. Water supply and dedication. The petitioner is conveying 51 acre, annual acre-feet of water with approximately 67 acre-feet of water required to provide water service to the property based on the conceptual plan they submitted. The development of the property will be phased until the additional 16 acre-feet of water has been committed. Public notice. The notice for this meeting and for the July 17 Town Council meeting were published in the Gazette on June 7. The property was posted on June 12, and notice was mailed to property owners within 500 feet on May 30. Letters of opposition have been received, no letters of support have been received. Staff review and opinion of the annexation. The annexation is consistent with the 2023 three-mile plan and annexation review considerations. It generally complies with the 2017 comprehensive plan. It is in the interest of the Town of Monument, and it meets the Colorado revised statutes' annexation requirements on contiguity, posting, public notice, property ownership, etc. Staff review and opinion on the zoning. It meets the rezoning criteria two regarding traffic, parking, and services. Three, changed characteristics. Four, community need housing, our community need for housing. And seven, adequate infrastructure, and generally with criteria six, which is conformance to the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation is approval. Annexation based on the findings that the annexation is in general compliance with the comprehensive plan as in the interest of the town, and for zoning because it complies with zoning criteria two, three, four, and seven of Section 1803140. So I'm going to move on to Monument Ridge Number Two.
Yes, ma'am.
And jump right into that one.
Perfect, thank you.
So give me a second to pull up that.
A lot of information that is being passed, so what I would request, yeah, we're going to get through it, we understand the oppositions, we understand the issues at hand, I would just hold the cheers, hold all that, we're going to get through it, but it's going to be a very long night already. So again, we're going to make it through, just we've got to get through all the narrative aspects of everything here, so please bear with us. And we're trying to be louder.
I'm trying.
You're going to have a problem hearing me.
No. Maybe you should do the presentation.
No, it's all you.
All right, Monument Ridge Number Two, which is the east side. This is the general, or this is the location, it's not a general location, this is the location of that property. This again is the plat, and this is the area right here showing contiguity. So the key here is that Monument Ridge Number Two cannot happen without Monument Ridge Number One. Monument Ridge Number One establishes the required contiguity for Monument Ridge Number Two. A request by Monument Ridge East LLC for annexation and initial zoning of property located on the southeast corner of I-25 and County Line Road, known as Monument Ridge Number Two, it's 71.01 acres. The zoning requested is residential attached RA zone district. The conceptual plan shows 344 dwelling units. On the west side of Misty Acres Road, excuse me, you have 122 duplex, 36 triplex, and 64 fourplex on 40.52 acres, which is 8.49 dwelling units per acre average. On the east side of Misty Acres, it's 14 single-family, 23 single, or 15,000 square feet, those are the ones closer to Doewood, and then 23 single-family on 6,000 square feet afterwards. That is at 1.95 dwelling units per acre on 18.96 acres. Zoning. Again, this one is in the county, so to the north, you have Douglas County, which is agricultural zoning. How do I move that so I could see, Mike? Thank you. On the south, you have commercial center and rural residential five-acre. To the east, you have To the east you have Residential Suburban, which are twenty thousand square foot lots and Rural Residential Five Acre Lots. And then you have commercial, or to the west, Commercial C one and the Recreational Vehicle Park. Part of the existing zoning on this is PUD. It's the Misty Acres PUD. And you can see a picture of it on the screen. The PUD for Misty Acres allows a mix of housing types. It allows three hundred and fifty-eight total dwelling units on a hundred and twenty-four point four acres. Single family sixty-two at two DUs per acre, seventy-five single family at two point five DUs. That's dwelling units per acre. I'm sorry if I go into planning jargon. They have multifamily with fifty units at four to six dwelling units per acre, a hundred and eighty-five units at eight to eleven dwelling units per acre. The multifamily includes patio homes, apartments, condominiums and townhomes. Again, same project history on this one. It was submitted for annexation last fall, went to Planning Commission, was tabled, went to the board and they tabled it as well. And then the petitioner withdrew the application and it was not the Board of County Commissioners. They did resubmit in March and it follows the same process as Monument Ridge number one. This is also the same annexation and approval criteria for the Planning Commission. Over the next few slides, I'm not going to reread everything again so that we can get into all the hearing, but I did want to do it the first time around to get it on record. So these are the zoning criteria again. Project summary. It meets the contiguity. Perimeter is ten thousand zero one four. One-sixth contiguity is one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. The one-sixth contiguity provided is three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. Again, this one would also have a metro district and would follow the next steps in the entitlement process with plating and site plan. This is also residential attached, so it's the same uses. Also, the same uses have been removed. The multifamily, the boarding house and manufactured housing. This is the conceptual plan for this side of the road. It's fifty-nine point four acres total. East side of Misty Acres is the hundred and twenty-two two-family units, thirty-six triplex, sixty-four fourplex. And then the west side you can see are the single family units that would transition from the Doe Wood over to Misty Acres Boulevard. There is, east side, sorry. The roundabout at County Line Road that has been presented, C dot has approved it and so the intersection at County Line and Misty Acres will be a roundabout. The existing zoning for this property is C one, CC, which is Community Commercial, CS, which is Community Services and PUD. No residential is allowed in the commercial, but as you, as I previously showed, it is allowed in the PUD. And the roundabout again is required because the intersection is too close to the off-ramp for it to be a signalized intersection. Again, this one is also within the boundaries of the three mile plan, so it does meet that criteria. I'm going to go through these. If you want to read them, all of these will be posted on our documents on demand. You can also find our comprehensive plan there at any time. It's mixed use and business campus, which is the exact same as it was on the other side. So all of the same criteria, goals, opportunities and policies that I previously read would also apply here. Again, compliance with the comprehensive plan is the same. The property is shown as mixed use and business campus on the future land use plan. The proposed initial zoning of residential attached zone district is not conformance with the future land use map. Our staff rec supports a deviation as the amount of commercial shown in this area is not easily justifiable due to the lack of housing to support it. No new development will occur on the north side of County Line Road in Douglas County as this is an open space conservation easement and or agricultural area. Properties to the east are low density and likely not to develop without additional annexation. Interest of the town. By annexing the property into the town, the town will have oversight in the development. Town oversight can help ensure the community vision, community values and viewpoints are taken into consideration. Annexation agreement. Again, this is all the same. The difference on this side is that the water is provided by Woodmore Water and Sanitation. The roads would be County Line Road and Misty Acres Boulevard that they would be required to construct as part of it in addition to the internal roadways. Public notice was the same. Same recommendations on the annexation consistent with the two thousand and twenty-three three mile plan and annexation review. Generally complies with the twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen comprehensive plan, is in the interest of the town of Monument. Meets CRS annexation requirements. For zoning, meets the rezoning criteria of two, three, four and seven and generally with criteria six. Staff recommendation of approval. Annexation based on the findings that the annexation is in general compliance with the comprehensive plan and is in the interest of the town and zoning complies with zoning criteria two, three, four and seven. So this is the questions and in summary, I just want to reiterate, it would be four motions. One for each on annexation, one for each for the zoning. And to emphasize, the main issue here is if you want this in the town or you don't. I know there's a lot of question about the densities, the uses and non-compliance, but it either develops in the county or it develops in the town. And I leave it at that.
Thank you very much ma'am. At this point, what I want to ask is the applicant here today. Okay. With the applicant here, did you have a brief or was staff briefing for you? Public comment. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I would like to go ahead and make sure that the applicant does have an opportunity to speak on behalf of their project. Please, sir.
Good evening. My, is this on?
Don't.
It's on, it just.
I just need to well into it or?
Yeah. It doesn't radiate in the room. Correct.
David Whitehead, I represent the applicant.
Thank you.
Items on your agenda. Just a few clarifications. Extensively on a lot of the details that she's presented. We don't take exception to any of it. We've got some things to work on once we get into the town and, and do formal plans and formal submittals and revise and work on densities and layouts and so on. The plans that she presented are conceptual in nature and we recognize that and we've got some things to pin down. I will say that the annexations by both times, the first time that we did and then withdrew and the second time were by invitation of the town of Monument. Those were in, those, these applications were as a result of conversations with the town of Monument. Recognizing that the development could occur in the county with the existing zoning and or zone changes in the county to develop the property and the town understandably wanted some kind of control about how that property would develop as a next door neighbor to the town of Monument. And the way to do that was to work through this process as an annexation and work with the town of Monument to sort through the details of how that would progress. A clarity about the roundabout. It's a controversial topic for everybody. It came up in our initial application to the town of, or into El Paso County with C dot and Douglas County and El Paso County Departments of Transportation on that original pre-application meeting with, with El Paso County. The location is approved. The preference is for a roundabout. The roundabout or whatever traffic control configuration might occur at that intersection was to be determined by the traffic study. And the traffic study as it sits today and has been submitted does not yet speak to that. But the criteria for the traffic study review is different in the town of Monument a little bit than it is in El Paso County. So if we get into the town of Monument with the annexation and the initial zoning, one of our next steps will be to update that traffic study and do it in accordance with the town of Monument's criteria so that we meet all the bullet points for that study and understand what the needs are. We cannot, and this will take me into the Douglas County ownership thing, North County Line Road. On the west side is, is the, of I twenty-five, North County Line Road in Douglas County is a spruce out in open space and, and El Paso County, or excuse me, Douglas County parkland. On the east side is private property. Zoned agricultural with a conservation easement over the top of it, which precludes any kind of disturbance of the property. So constructing a roundabout at that, at that intersection cannot include any encroachment out of the right of way to the north side of Monument Hill Road or County Line Road. I'm sorry. So that creates some constraints on the size of the roundabout. Will it function properly? How many people in this room have driven through roundabouts that are too small? Trailers go up over the top of the center of them. So while the roundabout's on the map today, it will be a point of discussion to make sure that we can get it in there, get it in the right size. Look at the other opportunities for flow control at that intersection as this area develops. C dot is in support of the location. They control every access point within five hundred feet of the right of way. So five hundred feet east, five hundred feet west, a long County Line Road to the parcel on the west side, which they have said no access off of County Line Road into the property on the west side. Monument Ridge West, or Monument Ridge number one annexation on the west side. No annexation or no access into the property off of County Line Road because C dot controls that access. And we're in a similar situation. On the east side, the existing intersection with Monument Hill Road and County Line Road is the location of the roundabout. When they did the improvements and did the bridge, they spread the on and off ramps out a little bit. So the one, the northbound off ramp went east about twenty-five or thirty feet. That encroaches on that spacing, intersection spacing for where the roundabout would be or that intersection is today. But C dot has agreed that it can stay where it is. We just need to work through the, the configuration of the intersection. After that, the write-up from the staff we're substantially in agreement with. We want to do this with the town of Monument. And we recognize that we've got, once we annex and have our initial zoning, we, we recognize that there is a lot of work to get done and work through a lot of details. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or I'm done.
We'll have some more questions for you, sir. We'll go ahead and kick off with the public hearing. Okay, public comments. And again, once we get into the public comments, they may, then we'll bring you back up to, you know, go ahead and get some rebuttal.
Okay.
And then we'll go into the commissioner questions and then we'll, we'll make some votes after that. Okay. Thank you for your time. All right, folks. So you heard from the staff, you've heard from the applicants. Next portion of this will be, again, we're going to go ahead and open public hearing. Now with public hearing, the most important part of this, you've got three minutes. What I'd like for you to do is come on up to the front and I understand there's people in the back, back there that can or cannot hear us. So all the residual noise that we provide in here basically is affecting them to hear the comments. Okay. And what that's going to do is obviously if Mr. Johnson says one thing and Mr. Smith comes up here, it may be the same comment that we're missing and we're going to be here for a long time. Okay. I don't mind spending that time here, but I want to make sure that I'm not wasting yours. So please be mindful of the comments. Let's get through all the comments. We'll be recording those. It's being recorded live so everybody can see what's being said. And then from there we can push on through the meeting. I'll time you with three minutes and I will ask, if we start coming close, I will ask you kindly, please go ahead and wrap up those comments. Once we're done with the comments from the public, we will give the applicant the opportunity to address those issues. Okay. Once that's done, we'll close public comments. We'll close his rebuttal and then now we'll have the commissioners make those comments or ask questions as well. All right. Then we'll make the voting portion of this. Any questions on what's the agenda? Yes, sir. It's a majority. No, sir. There's only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us. Correct. Yes, sir. But again, we're not making the decision. We're just giving the recommendation to the town council. Obviously that will be presented up to them on what we chose to do and they'll make the decision. That's correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You're very welcome. Any other questions before we get started? These documents are on document on demand at monuments, townofmonument.org, correct staff?
Yes.
Thank you. Certainly. The, the, the best part about this is again, all of you being here. Okay. Honestly, this is what it's all about because again, yes, can we get a bigger venue? Certainly. But again, you being here makes that noticeable. Okay. So it's an issue. We understand. And again, yes, we will make that effort to get it into a bigger venue. Yes, sir. Last question. The staff is over here. That would be Jeffrey, obviously, or Jeff. You got Luke and then you got Sheila as the planner for the state or for this city, town. Holy moly. Yeah, 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 yeah. So that's staff. This is your voting members on the commission, planning commission. Yes, sir. Yeah, Mr. Or, Danny Or.
Commissioner Oars, I'd just like to respond to that gentleman that asked about the bigger venue. I, I would say that probably staff will talk to the council for the July seventeenth meeting based on what we see here. And there may be a bigger venue for that. Just for your information because whatever we do here, you're going to go there on the seventeenth anyway, unless you're on vacation.
Yes. Well, that's, that's, let's, let's get through this. And, and the reason why I ask that is because who selects the staff? Those are employees of the town of Monument. Town manager and the mayor. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. No, no worries. Any other questions before we get started? One more. You do. Yes, sir. But the end, the vigilance is you're more than welcome at any point to put in an application and come into the commission. We're all members of town of Monument. Okay, that's, that's another issue. But, but again, ma'am, we, we, we're going to have a long night here. No worries. All right. Well, but again, you're asking the question. We are members of the town of Monument. We are members within the city or town of Monument that were elected obviously to be on that planning commission. Now inside Woodmore, I'm assuming that's where you're at up north. Is that correct? I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. And again, that's, that, that's going to be everything off of the county and it's not recognized as the city of, or the town of Monument. Yes, ma'am. Okay. And, and that's why you're here is to make those, those, yes, ma'am. Yeah. No, no. And that's fine. That's what we're here for. Okay. Ma'am. Sir. Ma'am. Okay. When we, when we come in to public comment, I would ask for you to come up, make that comment, put it on there so that way we can address that. That's a perfect, great question. Okay, ma'am. When, 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 when you come up and ask that question on the podium and give me the name and address, I'm all about it. Then from there I can push it to staff and staff can address that question. Perfect. Are we ready? Here we go. What I'd like to do in an orderly manner, just line up in front of the podium, go ahead and put your name and address in there, ask the question. You got three minutes to make your comments and then from there we'll go ahead and either address it to staff or if we can answer it here at the commission, we will do so. Thank you very much, ma'am. Folks, I'd ask if you can go ahead and keep it down so we can make sure the people in the back can hear, please.
So I'll readdress the question. What brought the applicant forward and then later caused the applicant to withdrew the request for both annexation and rezoning? What conversations occurred in the process of that? And then what initiated the reapplication?
Perfect. Thank you very much, ma'am. And your name was?
Julie.
Julie, thank you very much. Staff, do you want to answer in succession or do you want to just wait till, how do you want to work this?
We'll be at the end, addressing all the questions then. That way we.
Well, the reason, the reason why I would not ask to do that is simply because if we don't get an answer, we may run into further. we may run into further problems down the line. It's just going to.
That works for me then.
All right, ma'am.
So I will let the applicant address why they withdrew. The city initiated and discussions with them because we knew what could develop in the county and we would rather have some oversight and control over the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Does that answer your question, ma'am? The applicant is up here. He's with, he's up, yes, ma'am. Please, sir, and your name?
My name is Ray O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Ray.
And I'm a consultant with Monument Ridge, the applicant.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to let people know that the last time we were at the planning commission was in November, after thorough vetting of the project and working with staff at Infinitum to try to make sure that the application was thorough and consistent with the goals of the town of Monument. And when we came to planning commission, if you recall, the meeting went on for several hours and it became very evident that this project was not being, not only accepted by the planning commission, but the planning commission also refused to even take a vote on it. And at that time, the tenor of it was such that we thought, you know what? We have zoning in this, in the county. And the zoning in the county is very sort of aggressive in terms of land use and very intensive, you know, industrial buildings and commercial buildings and all that. And so we decided that it just, it wasn't, wasn't worth the investment time and energy if we weren't welcomed into the town. So we decided to go to El Paso County. And going through the whole process in El Paso County, spending the money for applications and all the processes that you go through. And we got a phone call from the town of Monument. And we, they said, listen, this is a new town board. We would ask you to reconsider and come back in and, and reapply in the town of Monument. So we scrapped all the fees, consulting, applications to be consistent with the county process and thought being welcomed back into the town of Monument. Had meetings with.
Folks, we, we have to have a decorum here. We have to. And I, I would ask, if we do not, we're going to have a very long night. Let him speak. He's on, he's given you his explanation, we'll be able to address it, but we need to have some formal decorum here, please. It's three minutes, it's already being timed, yes, sir.
Well, I, I'm answering her.
That's correct, sir.
And, and I was just trying to give some context as to why we're back in this room tonight.
Yes, sir.
Despite the hostility that we experienced the first time we came in and all of a sudden the town called back and said, listen, this, we, we want you to reconsider this.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to have some input and control as to what goes on these properties. The people are going to talk. Do you want to answer the question, ma'am? I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay, so anyway, so the, the town asked us to come back in.
Yes, sir.
And so again, when, when we first started the process, year and a half ago or so, we worked with your staff and your staff did change several times. But in all cases, we felt like we were working in good faith and consistent with the rules of annexation and land use that was in the best interest of the town of Monument and encouraged to do so. Until we ran, basically ran into a buzzsaw when we came to the, to the planning commission.
We got about like 30 seconds.
It's fine.
Yes, sir.
I just want people to understand that we had given up on coming into the town of Monument and spent the money to go into the county.
Yes, sir.
And, and the county zoning is again, very, very liberal, very aggressive for land use.
Yes, sir.
And we met with the neighbors who are most affected because I, I, when people come up and speak against the project, I love to know where they live and how this is a disbenefit to them.
Yes, sir.
So we went, met with the neighbors and if you.
Okay, guys.
Why don't we let Norby talk about the meeting he had with.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's, thank you very much for that, okay? That gives us a baseline. What I'm going to have you do, just be off to the side. We may have to push all the questions till the end, simply because again, I would ask that you would take some notes because you'll have to address those. If we keep going this route, we're going to be here all night long.
Certainly, thanks for.
Thank you very much. Sir, please put your name and your address on there if you would, please, if not already. Okay, thank you.
First and foremost, thank you. I appreciate you all being here tonight. My name is Dr. James Hinton. I am from the United States Army, retired. I moved to Monument because it's a small, beautiful town. I am. I live at 1843 Baker Drive. I am a single roadway from where you're about to go. As this is also about complex, let me make it very clear that your room's still not well up here. My question is, there is multiple projects happening within Monument. I do not have children, I do not plan on having children, but I do live very close to the school system. But into the presentation, it is a big reason why people move here. What is being done to accommodate all the children that will come into this community? Beyond the roadway, the structures, infrastructure, the water, all that is important and that's great. They have lots of studies for that, that's fantastic. What about social infrastructure? How is Safeway going to end up increasing their quantity for sales? How is the variety of the school system going to keep up demand? We're already losing schools within the system or teachers within the system. And about 1,000 people within the residents that they're proposing, you can assume easily 150 children. That is six additional full classrooms, six additional teachers. I want to know what they are going to do. Them as developers to make that come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, thank you, putting your name on there, your address, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, folks, for the decorum. That is important as we get through this.
Talking to these people, they have never talked to people on our street. We are a closed community and we all talk to each other. They have never once approached us. This directly impacts my home and my property value. My question is, how are you going to address saving our property value? And why can't we just save it as Woodmore? Why does it need to go into the town of Monument? It could be Woodmore, they'd have to apply to the HOA of Woodmore of the square footage and the lot size. I'm not opposed to them developing the land. I completely understand moving forward and not sitting on vacant land that you purchased. But please adhere to what Woodmore is requiring of a half acre lot at 1,800 square foot homes. I think that that's a fair request and I would ask the town of Monument to please not approach them again to come back or they're clearly not wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And same thing, ma'am, if you would, please, name and address there, thank you. If you'd like, once, once you're done putting your name and address on there, if you'd like to hand that back to the gentleman behind you, do we happen to have a clipboard or something like that, Luke, that we can give them? That way we can speed up the process by keeping that available.
We will.
Thank you, ma'am. And then we'll just hand that back, folks, so that way just stay in line and then that way we're getting the formality portion complete, if you don't mind.
Hi.
Hello, ma'am.
My name's Ebony Bolt. I am actually. I say sorry.
Okay, no worries. Ebony, if it's easier for you to list or project that way, that's okay. We, as long as we can hear you, I think you guys are okay with that. Okay, so yeah, you can go ahead and face them if you'd like.
Um, she needs to have the microphone towards her.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
My name is Fred Darling. I do not live in the town Monument, I did not vote for you. The reason I'm here is I live on Upper Beacon Light Road, not a street away, across the street.
Yes, sir.
It's all five acre lots. We're the smallest minority here, there's only five affected by this. Yet, my, the other question was raised about property values, for one. The reason people buy a five acre lot, privacy, trees, with a bunch of multifamily housing over there, it's gone. My lot property value just went like this, down, for those who can't see. The other question is more people, more crime. Until about two years ago, I didn't lock my doors at night. Now, I remarried, my wife's a little freaky about that, I do. I will definitely be doing if something like this happens. I really don't see the transition on the west project from five acre lots to townhomes and duplexes. That's not a transition. The transition is other single family housing, homes on somewhat spacious lots. Yeah. So those are my biggest concerns.
Thank you very much, sir. A little decorum, please, sir. Sir. Please.
Ready to go? All right, thank you. Kane Cotton, 19880 Marfac Drive, Monument 80132. Resident off and on since 1974. I fully support the town of Monument annexing this land and not approving the change of use. It is a fully inappropriate usage of that land. As the prior speaker said, there are precisely zero lots that size in between Beacon Light, 105 County Line. There's a huge triangle that is completely out of character with all that. Speaking to my friends over on the east, again, it's the same thing. Those are half acre lots. It is wholly inappropriate to put 100 on this.
Acre lots, they're acre to acre lots.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
They're not 20, they're not 20 on an acre. 15 on an acre, whatever nonsense I just heard.
Yes, sir. No, thank you very much, sir.
Scott Schnacki, 2620 Bricker Road, just west of this. I, one of my things, one of my main concerns is the lack of transparency, that they've put different information online. Their sign is fading in front of the property. There's no way to see that this actual meeting was happening, other than when I took a picture two weeks ago of the sign. They've, the confused, the presentation somewhat confusing of what exactly they're putting there. Duplexes now, I believe, on the west is what the current proposal is.
Yes, sir.
They've shown some parks and some trails around that, but it's very minimal. So a minimal attempt to show that they're trying to comply with the, the zoning and the setbacks and the transitions like they talked about. So I agree with that and I agree with everything everybody's said so far. I'm an El Paso County unincorporated resident. I don't, didn't vote for anybody here and have no say in the Monument voting or anything like that. But I think one of the main things is just going straight from the residential, I, I obviously didn't get a flyer because I'm more than 500 feet, but only one house on each side would. I mean, that lack of transparency, that a five acre lot doesn't cover more than 500 or, you know, the next house over is probably more than 500 feet away.
Sure.
And it's just, it's sad to see that they're not actually trying to outreach to anybody. They're just trying to do the bare minimum in my mind. The traffic study on Beacon Light is a big example of that. Post-COVID counts, no account for correction to post-COVID. Their Beacon Light's about to be paved. What difference do you think that's going to make in how fast people go when they take away the stopping site distances, correct the curves that are tight? And pave it, that's going to be a huge traffic difference. They're showing no improvements, not annexing Beacon Light, not annexing the nation roads to get out of those improvements and not have to use the metro district funds to pay for future improvements. What difference do you think all these houses is going to add? And then disconnecting Monument Hill Road on the east is going to be a huge difference. People are going to take Beacon Light. But they're just showing this real quick count, trying to minimize the impact, show that, no, it'll be fine. Beacon Light and County Light, County Road intersection will be just fine the way it is. But they know that there's a huge difference between what's going to be and what's currently there. There's a, there's a large difference, that's flawed, that, that needs to be taken back completely and try again. So my, a huge concern of mine is my children. I moved from Colorado Springs recently. I'm a Littleton native, native Coloradan. My wife's from Colorado Springs, she grew up there. We moved away from the cities. I have no regrets leaving Denver suburb. My wife has no regret leaving Colorado Springs. And now you're going to put this extremely dense residential right in our backyard where we moved to rural area and putting it right across, the contrast between Douglas County and El Paso County side is disgusting. Where we're going from beautiful open space, very well preserved by Douglas County to a money grab by Monument to stretch across through, past the neighbors of El Paso County with no say by annexing straight up I-25, using that as a neutral zone. And then putting all this huge density, it's going to look disgusting. I mean, you see it across town already.
Yes, sir.
But this is just a stark contrast that's pathetic, where you see that open space, the wise planning, and this is a chance for Monument and El Paso County to make good decisions. Don't allow that directly adjacent to that. Make good decisions and help support actually making wisest. And I'm, the residential makes sense, but there's so many things they can do. Decrease the density, have more trails, have more open spaces, community, community, social areas. It's exactly like they talked about. What are kids going to do in this area when you put 350 plus kids, originally what it said online, 150?
30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Yes.
150 now is what it says, it's decreasing, which a little bit. What are those kids going to do on the west side of I-25? There is absolutely no way. You said they're going to add sidewalk to Beacon Light, but I doubt they're going to let it all the way down the county line in an appropriate way.
Yes, sir.
They may put on a four foot scab onto the edge of a pavement at most or a dirt driveway. What, my, my five year old's going to walk down the Safeway? I don't think so. Kids aren't going to either. I mean, it's disgusting.
And we, and we understand, I mean, definitely appreciate that comment and thank you, we'll put that into our constitution. And you've already signed, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Howdy, I don't know if this is working. Um, my name is Melissa Riesling and I live about a mile east of I-25. So unincorporated El Paso County. There's a lot that I could comment on, whether it's water, schools, traffic. Um, I'm going to skip that, but what I'm really curious is if you don't annex and you turn this project down, is it my understanding that these parcels of land are in the county? Is that correct? And then the county zoning would prevail with this proposed project? Is that correct? Perhaps or not? I, what I'm curious is if you guys turn this down and they work with the county, I feel like we've heard some scare tactics tonight about how liberal the El Paso County commissioners are or what they might turn this land into. And I don't know if that's a scare tactic or that's reality or what, but I feel like we're kind of being pushed to annex and approve the residential. So hopefully you can address that way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cynthia Fong Smith, and I live in northern, North Woodmore. I've been, I've been a resident here for seven years and I've trusted those who I elected to have my best interest at heart. So I've remained silent for the last seven years. However, the building that's occurring around my home and around the town, I realize that maybe the elected officials are not acting in my best interest. So I want to know that the applicant said that they were invited to come back again. Who were the people who invited them? He mentioned also that it was the new board that's now in town who's invited them. So I want to know the names of the new board who invited the applicant. I want to know the names of the staff who might have invited the applicant. And I want to know where does the applicant live? Do they live in North Woodmore as I do?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, ma'am.
I did sign in.
Yes, sir.
Harold Larson, 20270 Dover Drive. My backyard is the eastern portion of this request for annexation.
Yes, sir.
I spoke in November and post that event where we had a lot of input and the annexation request was withdrawn, the developer reached out and started talking about, you know what, how can we make this work? I'm also on the board of NEPO. So we serve almost 50 HOAs in a capacity of advice and counsel. We have seen the county commissioners change zoning to accommodate, whether it be higher density or affordable housing. And with the recent effort by the governor to impose an overreach and tell communities what they should do related to zoning, I believe that we are in the best hands by allowing the town to control this versus the county. I've heard the county commissioner said, if you want to control zoning, buy the property. That was a response of one county commissioner to a effort like this. Do we feel we're going to have this kind of an audience with the county? Do we feel we're gonna have this kind of an audience with the county? I think not. I think not. So in response, the developer reached out to me personally and we sent an email. We sent an email to the HOA, our HOA requesting, if you wanna talk to the developer face to face, come on in. Rather than lob things across the fence at the developer with, with the planning commission, uh, come talk to him. He spent an hour and forty five minutes with us and answered many questions on the detail of the development. I can tell you point blank that this will pass the county's governance. They will make this work for this developer. I want this in her hands, in his hands, in his hands, not in their hands. It's control. This is, this is our community. The best way we can manage our community is to put our community in charge of its oversight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So my name is Bruce Sidebotham. I own the vacant property just to the south of the plan for Monument East. And I can address the lady's concern about the intention to the county. I've actually been in touch with the county planning commission on proposals to develop my land. And one of the things that they suggested I do was put apartments on it. I'm still in the county. I'm not part of this petition. I'm not petitioning to annex. Um, I'm watching this process take place. And I may or may not want to annex into the town of Monument. I can develop my land in the county and I can put industrial on it. So I'm watching you guys, my neighbors. And that land is gonna be developed. It's right next to the interstate highway. If you didn't wanna be next to develop land, you shouldn't have moved so close to an interstate. That vacant land is a nuisance. People dump on that land. Vagrants camp on that land. It's in the county and the sheriff is way the heck down in Colorado Springs and that land is not policed. When I call because there ATV's and motorcycles tearing up my property, I can't get any attention. That land is A, gonna be developed. It's very valuable next to the highway. And it's probably more valuable as industrial than it is as these duplexes. Monument needs affordable housing. My, 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 I'm, I'm, this is true. I, I, I have parents I wanna put in Bethesda home and, and, and they can't hire people at Bethesda because they can't get people to come up to Monument to work because they can't afford to live here. Your, your people can't get people to work in McDonald's and Wendy's and, and stuff because they don't wanna commute up to Monument to work. There's no place affordable for them to live up here. Okay, I think I've said enough.
Thank you, sir.
Get booed on the way out, but thank you for listening. And I know that, um, these people, most of them don't vote for you because they're not in Monument.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Linda Kednik and I live on the east side of I twenty five and this development would be right behind our house. And it is actually the worst place to build. Sometimes in the wintertime, quite a few times we open up our garage door and there is seven to eight feet of snow. So there's people I, we used to help people that were in front of our house parked. Um, you know, they got stuck in the snow and we'd go out there and we're like, get it, we're all soaked. So now we just leave a shovel outside of our garage because it's just a nightmare. People, I, sometimes after a snowstorm, we wake up and there's five to eight cars just stuck right off of our street, which is on Old Antlers Way. And I just want to say, you know, so nice to have deer. You know, we see deer back there. There's a little shed back there. Two deer sleeping there and at night we shine our flashlight and we can see all these glowing eyes and it's just terrible how greedy people are and it's all about the dollar. And they don't care about families and we're just sick of it. So just wanted to express that tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my, uh, my name is Santos Rivera. I'm a retired military police officer, twenty seven years. Actually retired out of here for Carson. Um, if you see the blotter from Monument and you compare the blotter report with Denver or Colorado Springs, you'll be amazed how much difference between both cities and Monument. Probably one, two or three accidents or incidents a day. You probably have a Colorado street in Denver, probably ten, twenty or fifty. That's not including assaults, house burglaries or all those kinds of things. Developing in that area was gonna bring affordable housing. And I'm not just debating because, I mean, we gotta give personal opportunity. However, that's good, exactly. Thank you. That in my backyard. Um, it's gonna bring crime. Crime rate is gonna increase in Monument if you, if we develop that. What's gonna happen to your police department? The budget is gonna go up because you not have the police uh, resource to attack that crime rate. All right? And that's not gonna be on us. Because we've been, we, one of the reasons why I wanted to live in Monument is first because there's no crime. Literally. If I see, and I looked at a blotter every day. All right? Other thing is your environmental. I mean, it's nice to get off the, from working at it at the YMCA. Go outside, get a cup of coffee, sit down, watch the deers just run around or, or the rabbits or whatever. That is quality of life. If we have, if we approve this project, it's gonna affect the quality of life of all the residents in Monument. Right? I hope you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jennifer Tretina and I live on the east side in Wood, North Woodmore, actually the furthest north street in Woodmore. And, um, I came because I care about the community and I have kids that are like love the land, love the space and understand that we need trees and grass to have oxygen to breathe. And if you continue to keep cutting all of this down, what are we gonna have? And my kids are sitting out in the hallway because that's about how much I wanted to be here. I didn't have a place for them. So they on their own decided to draw you guys a picture of what we actually need this space to look like. It includes Keep Colorado Wild made by Trinity and Oliver Tretina. It says ponds, uh, splash pads, playgrounds. I'm sorry, but even when I moved to Woodmore, it says that there is community land. There is nothing for kids. Add some more things that the kids can do. If I wanna go to a nice park, I go all the way up to Castle Rock or I go all the way down to the Springs. And now you're gonna add this many more homes with this many more families that do not have a place, like that other gentleman said, for them to go. And I'm speaking to this man who came up here and degraded every other person that spoke and said that we want and we need more small homes. No, we do not. Nobody in this room wants that, probably except for that one man. We need space. We need community amplifiers, things that actually are going to make families grow and keep our, this is why we moved here. This is why we moved to Monument in to stay. I grew up on five acres in Colorado Springs and I didn't wanna live in a tract home, so I came up here. And at least I still have a little bit of property and it's beautiful. I can walk up the street and I'm in the trees. I can have the, oh, and by the way, the open space right there that you think is junk and people throw junk on? No, there was really nice trails until a few months ago when you guys closed them down that now I can't go and take my dog on a walk.
All right, all right, come on, folks.
Signs, am I done?
Thirty seconds.
There was not signs, so people did use that space. So all I'm saying is I think that people would agree, we would love to have some trail system and other things that are not compiled with thousands of homes building up the space.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Lupo and I live at ten forty three Greenland Forest Drive, which is on the other side, the east end. I have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. First of all, I don't even see any benefits yet for the homeowners who are actually here. I haven't seen anything that says that this is the benefit for all of you guys. Your taxes just went up in El Paso County.
Yeah.
And now we're gonna add possibly more schools and things like that. That's gonna cost us, not just the new people moving in. As for the gentleman who made the comment that we chose to move into a home near the freeway, guess what? That land was still empty when we bought it seven years ago. So you chose not to do anything with it in the way of putting nice homes there, which would be included into what is already the, um, the look of the towns. You're wanting to add industrial or you're wanting to add all these apartment buildings and all these additional people, which we can't afford. I know my water bill is sky high. It's just gonna go up. My gas, my electric, everything has gotten higher. Um, I also live right off County Line Road. You put a traffic circle in there and look at how many accidents you're gonna have. I have tried to do just the speed limit and had people not only run up my butt, but go around me where there is no passing lane on County Line Road. The traffic on there has gotten worse, especially if there's a problem on the freeway. They go down the side road over there and they come down County Line Road. That's gonna be even worse when you start putting more people out here. I also have a question about you said that the town of Monument told you you weren't welcome, that there was a lot of hostility. So what happened is you decided to then go over the wishes of the people who actually live here and pay for this area and go to the county instead. And to me, that seems like you just jumped right over us and that's like going to your boss's boss to me. These are the people who live here. I'm not, you're not to comment. It's my time. Already we have to call the sheriff, just like the other gentleman said. We don't have anything and I apologize. I've looked to see why my ballot doesn't have the name. I thought I was part of the town of Monument because you guys consider me, excuse me, consider me Monument. But I obviously don't have voting rights for anything that goes on. And I understand some incorporated. However, I still count regardless.
Certainly.
Um, let's see what else.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, thank you.
No worries.
I do believe that it, if there is gonna be any type of commercial put in there, that's just gonna add even additional problems.
Yes, ma'am.
Robberies, there's things like that because the closer you are to a freeway, the quicker access it is for somebody who's trying to be in trouble to get out of town.
Certainly. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, um. My name is Robert Basera.
Yes, sir.
Live on Old Antlers Way. We moved here twenty two years ago. Left Briar Gate. This is very emotional because we didn't wanna reach out and touch our neighbor. We wanted the land. And I believe their interest is solely the dollar. I do believe you need to take control because they, as they said, will go back to the county. And the county is very liberal. They don't live up here. And they'll allow this multi-density housing. You need to dictate to this developer what they have to build, not multi-high residential. It needs to be single dwellings that complements Woodmore and what's already up here. Because I guarantee you if you vote against that this evening, which I think the majority of people would like you to do, I think that's the wrong move. A gentleman earlier said the same thing. You need to control what gets built up here. You need to take control. Your department needs to state what can be built. High density means only one, it means several things, but the most important thing is the dollar. They want more money. Money is the bottom line. People have said it will increase crime. Yes, it will. Is the Monument Police Department going to increase their staff? I do not know. But you need to take control of this planning issue. If you vote against it, and I'm sorry, the majority of you probably don't wanna hear that, you need to approve it and take control of what they build. They've already threatened us that if it's voted down this evening, they're going back to the county. You have no control. And we will see high-density housing. That is not what's needed up here. If we do develop that land, and I know it's very valuable land, they own it already. You need to control what gets built there. Not multi-low income housing apartments. It needs to be single dwellings on minimal property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
I live in Colorado State. Um, I really agree with most everybody except the gentleman with the vacant property, obviously. I'm sorry, I'll try to talk louder.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so we are unincorporated. And we're right off the Beacon Light, so we have no say. We don't get a vote. You know, it just seems so ironic. Um, I don't know if any of the neighbors got a, a letter or not, but I'm very glad I go on next door because that's where I got my information and I know I should be more involved with the town, but it's hard when you can't even vote. So I walk on Beacon Light. I know the area. Um, just these past rainstorms, that is a dirt road. So whatever they're improving it, there are rivets in this road because the rainstorm was so bad. You know, okay, what? You're gonna build a sidewalk and they're gonna try to put in all these homes. It, it, it doesn't gel. All the other neighbors have said that, but my main question is, is, is this affordable housing? What, what is their definition and what will it be? Because I do have extensive background with section eight. And I don't, I don't know what either side is going to be. I would like a definition on that. Um, I think that's really important because there are a lot of other rules with um, section eight that do need to be followed and a lot of other problems as well. So that was my main concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Before this goes too much further, there is nothing in this development that is affordable housing tied. There's, there's no requirement for affordable housing. I think when people are speaking about affordable housing, it's because it's smaller units, like a duplex is more affordable than a single family detached. So it's not section eight housing, it's not affordable housing. I just wanna clear that up real quick.
Uh, Greg Koopman, resident of the town of Monument. Uh, for the record, I, I would support annexation. I would not support uh, the zoning as proposed. Wanna take a few moments and talk about the comprehensive plan. I was elected to the Board of Trustees here in the town of Monument back in two thousand and sixteen. And one of the first things we did is put in effect the process to put and update our comprehensive plan. Um, dozens and dozens of meetings and stakeholders, including developers, participated to develop what, what you all are familiar with, which is the twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. Um, it is a, a comprehensive voice of what we as a community want our community to be. And it never ceases to amaze me, the developers who wanna come in and annex into our community, yet they don't wanna participate in the comprehensive plan and the, the voice of the people, uh, the way that we outlined, this is what it's gonna take to be a part of our community. Um, so a couple of comments regarding the proposals in front of you today. Um, as you likely know, I, I have good faith in this planning commission as I do the, the town council. Uh, in no way, shape or form is this proposal in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the will of the people approving as proposed with the zoning ignores the will of the people. RA zoning now will make all future decisions administrative, as town staff had stated, without any further public hearings other than a final plat. So the public will lose all say in how this is developed moving forward. Approving as proposed removes the voice of the people. And most concerning to me is the staff acknowledges that this proposal is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the will of the people, the voice of the people, yet they feel to take it upon themselves to go ahead and say, yes, that's okay. We'll make an exception this time. We need to ignore the voice of the people. Again, not in compliance with the comprehensive plan with this proposed zoning. It's there for a reason. It's what the people want.
Thank you, sir.
My name is David Funk. I live on Doewood Drive, right there, uh, right next to the, uh, My name is David Funk. I live on Doughwood Drive, right there, um, right next to the, uh, east side of that. I did want to think that was part of what I wanted to say, that it is a shoehorned in, but the other point I wanted to make is really a question for the developers and that is from what I understand, there is a, a wetlands in that area. And it is from the plat map I can see, it is grossly underdeveloped, underrepresented. It's a little bit of a corner in there. So the question that I would have is how did they mitigate that and go about doing that? And um, sometimes they do that with just a, a fund, you know, you pay the fine. Not a fine, it goes into a, a wetlands bank and then somewhere else in the, you know, state, a wetland gets created based on this fund. And so I think that's how that works. So I wanted to ask them how they um, address that, but also to contemplate, maybe even it may with the, with the fees that you pay for wetlands and building on wetlands on that one part that's right next to myself and everybody on Doughwood Drive. It may actually be more profitable, if that's the motive, to not build on that final section and the people on Doughwood. At least we retain our view, which let's face it, that's a big thing to me, living right there. I don't want to see someone's, I don't want to see three people making washing dishes. I'd rather see the mountains and the sunsets.
Yes sir.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Big cloud. And I also had a crown put in, it's my mouth a little bit funny today, so sorry about that. Okay, I just, um, I've known that there's going to be something built behind us since we moved in. We just didn't know when. It was just, we had an idea. And we moved in, in 2015. We didn't think it would be now. We thought maybe farther in the future, but in any event. So there's a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up about what some of the other people brought up. So first of all, um, our house is for sale on the market. We originally put it out there, um, at nine, roughly nine forty. It's now out there at eight forty. So to all of you that were talking about the value of your homes, there's a lot of houses on the market and they're just, and it has nothing to do with what they plan on building. It's there's too many houses on the market. So I just want you to think about that when you brought it up. The other thing, a nice gentleman brought up that crime. We already have crime in Monument. Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up as well. Um, one of the things I'm concerned about, and you did bring up, Sheila, about where we're going to get some of the water. That is the biggest thing that bothers me is we don't have the water. We really don't. And when we have dry years, it's worse. So that always bugs me. Um, uh, and the roundabouts, if they're done correctly, um, they work really well. I mean, my husband's English. We go there, there's roundabouts everywhere. And if you know how to drive through them, they're great. They're really wonderful, seriously. You know, semis, maybe not so good. Anyway. Um, so like I said, you know, we knew that something was going to happen. We didn't think it would be quite this bad. We thought there'd be bigger lots around, right? Not those teeny tiny things that we saw on that map towards, I'm, I'm on the east side, obviously, towards the, the highway. So those I'm not in favor of. The other ones, you know, could they have bigger lots, patio homes instead of those teeny tiny little things? I mean, it really is about breed and that really sucks because we don't want that. But um, I would just hope that they could reconsider some of the buildings because it's, we don't need it. We don't want it. But, you know, we knew something was going to happen. So anyway. Um, yes, I've known for a long time, we can't vote. We can't vote. We're in El Paso County. It's, I mean, a lot of, you know, because we live on Doughwood, there were a lot of things, I just did research to find out about how a lot of things were done. We knew we couldn't vote. So I reached out to, to put on this, this next, how much minute?
Thirty seconds.
Sorry. Um, I'm sorry. Um, so I said too much, they're too greedy. We should have larger lots and that would be beneficial for all of us. So in any event, um, oh yeah, and you said something about darker skies, which I think you're referring to no lights. We need that. We don't want lights. Okay, sorry.
No worries. Thank you ma'am.
Lady in this group. But anyway.
There is one, he's just not here.
Okay, um, my name is Elizabeth Anderson. I live just east of this project on High Pines Drive. I fortunately live high enough that I'm not going to see this project. But I will tell you that when I bought here in 2006 with Masterbuilt Homes, I was assured that the property which you have referred to, to the north of this, it's got a 99-year land lease on it. That is the one reason that I bought in this neighborhood. I moved away in 2012, moved back in 2015, rebuilt on the last open available lot on High Pines Drive. And the reason I built there is because exactly what all of these people are saying. We love our community. We're close. We know our neighbors. We all live on about a half acre to an acre lot. So we have sort of a country feel, but within, but within a group, a community. I have a student that attends Lewis Palmer Elementary. I drive him all the way over there. I am very concerned about the traffic impacts. I see accidents every day with the high schoolers getting to school. I have a business and I utilize giant storage off of Monument Hill Road. I commute with the kids that go to school. I'm concerned about taking away that property primarily because now you're going to ask me as someone who utilizes that for business to drive through my misty acre neighborhood every day because I don't have another way other than going all the way down the freeway and coming back. I'm also concerned about the trailer traffic for our great mobile home park. I oftentimes see trailers have problems already making that curve. I worry about putting those trailers that are lost trying to go through these neighborhoods. What I am also concerned about is like everyone said here, I think it's just the use. It's not that we don't want the land developed. We understand that someone purchased it. The sign's been out there for five years, for sale. Commercial zoned. That's not a secret to any of us. What is the problem is the density. It's how high, it's multiple. You talk about not having lights at night, but you will have to light a staircase. That means that every neighbor in that surrounding area is going to have lights into their windows. So I think really as the community, we're not objecting it to going to the town. I agree. But we have a problem that we don't have a voice in the town. That's the big discrepancy. Y'all want to take it over and I think it's probably a great idea to be honest. But we don't have a voice. So how do we get a voice with you all as people who live in the community? I think the best use of the property is to find a middle ground, maybe something like Misty Acres. Maybe not the acre parcels that we all dream it would be, but something that just makes more sense to fit within our community and helps each of our families that live there and utilize the property. So that's it.
Thank you ma'am.
Hi there, I'm Larry Wyora. I live in Colorado State, which is about a half mile west of this development. And I've been here for 35 years, just absolutely love this location. I just really have one question I'm going to say at the end, but I want to take everybody here on a drive, okay? I want to take you on a drive leaving Castle Rock and heading south on I-25. And as you start getting and start driving a little bit south, you take a look at the mountains along the side here. You see the sometimes snow cap, the open plains, the, uh, the place here that, uh, on the north side of County Line Road, you go through that. The gorgeous views, the prairies. On the left side or the east side, you'll see that mountain over there. Um, I forget what exactly it's called. You'll see deer, sometimes you even see elk on that side. That's Colorado, okay? All of a sudden, I get to the top of Monument Hill and what you guys are proposing is this high-density housing that doesn't relate to any of the stuff that I've just been driving for. And so I came from California 35 years ago. And let's continue on this drive and I'm going to talk about that. I'm coming down the top Monument Hill. You're proposing these, um, high-density housing in a half mile, three quarters of a mile, looks left side, I see Jackson Creek Development now that's underway with a lot of homes, okay? I go just a half mile further, I see this high-density housing in front of Walmart. Has anybody seen, I mean, everybody's seen that. Is that what we want on the top of Monument Hill?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the deal, okay? I came from California. I'm telling you right now, the only thing that's not part of Monument that is not, the only part of Monument that's not California anymore is Monument Hill. Is we want to make Monument Hill look like California? Is that what we're doing? I'm not against expansion. Okay, and, but I want reasonable construction, large lots, if we want to do that on both sides of the freeway that continues the beauty of Monument Hill that makes it look like Colorado and doesn't go from this transition of gorgeous prairies and mountains and animals to concrete, concrete structures, high structures that takes away all the beauty and any little bit left of Monument that looks like Colorado. So I asked the question, is that what everybody wants? And I, I don't think so.
Thank you, sir.
Over on True Vista. My wife grew up here. Parents built their house up here in 69. Reason they built the house up here is because the way that everything was set up, acreage, respect for the woods. Thanks for wait, and like the last gentleman said, the way Colorado looks. I understand these gentlemen bought the property. They have the right to develop it. They need to develop it responsibly. I would like to see Monument annex that property so that we do have a local voice and local people that, we're going to see you guys in the store. You know how we feel. You have a vested interest in this area. Secondly, traffic. I don't know when the traffic study was done. I recently saw gauges out on, uh, the Frontage Road. Thought it was very ironic after school, somebody's doing the traffic study. Anybody that's driven that road during the school year knows the density and the volume of traffic that occurs on that road. So anybody that did a study on that recently, I think that was a joke. As the other individuals have said, I've seen plenty of elk and deer in that land. I get up in the morning, five, six o'clock in the morning, go to wherever I'm building a bridge or a road. Happened to miss your presentation of certain bridge workers. So I really would like to see this commission say, Monument, get control of this. Let's control our own destiny. Let's listen to the people here. These people have a voice. Respect it. Embrace it. Again, these gentlemen have made an investment that understand our investment too. Our investment is that's our castle. Respect what we have. If you want to develop your stuff, respect us. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Dwayne Lacy. I live on Old Antlers Way. Um, I've talked to several of El Paso County, uh, uh, tax assessor, um, sheriff's office. Um, I've experienced living there since I retired from the army at 26 years. I've stayed here in Colorado Springs area. And I asked four or five commanding generals when I retired, where do I go? I don't know what to do. So he said, we'll stay here. Said, I don't even know where to go. So he told me, well, there's a subdivision up there that welcomes retired military and it was developed originally, I guess, by retired air force or something. So I said, oh wow, cool. I'll go check it out. So, long story short, I decided to buy a house up there without my wife's approval. Yeah, that wasn't a good choice. So, um, so ever since I've lived there, I've watched, um, the traffic go from zero to sixty from a stop sign and haul but, and you, and trucks delivering beer somewhere in Woodmore. I'd like to know where they're going. But I see beer trucks up and down the street. I saw them all kinds of crazy stuff. I called the sheriff. I'm sorry. I said, park in my driveway. You can, you can do a speed trap. Can't do that. I said, well, how do I get hold of you? Well, call us. It'll be about 12-minute response time. Okay, great. No problem. Got it. I called the tax assessor. Hey, what can I do? How do you raise my taxes so often? Well, that's because we're the county and we do a, every two years we can do it. Okay, great. I got a great answer. Okay. But my next, my worry is when I start seeing them drilling wells, water wells. And I'm like, wait a minute, they never sent me a letter telling me they're going to drill a water well. So the water guy comes, I'm the furthest house north in North Woodmore. So the Woodmore water guy comes up and says, can I test your water for magnesium or Magna or whatever it is? And I said, oh sure. So he fills it up and he tells me that they switch wells from a lake, an aquifer lake, and they switch the water back and forth. Then he tells me, oh, they're drilling so that we have more water for Woodmore. So where's the water speculation in your slides? Where's the water count? Because I will tell you, I tried to sell my house and moved to Tucson. And the only reason I didn't sell my house in Tucson or moved to Tucson was because I watched a full-blown California subdivision go straight to the tubes because they misassessed the water in the subdivision. And it was brand-new homes. And I said, wow, look at these homes. These are awesome. And the lady said, well, they're not for sale. There's a pink sign up that says the developer did not get the water approved. So guess what? Where's the water? Can I see the water amount coming out of that awkward? Because they're really worried. And I don't see Woodmore. Woodmore here, Woodmore water. You know what? I'm just saying, we really need the water because you develop that, the water usage is going to go up, car washings. I mean, come on.
Thirty seconds.
That's my total thing. So the water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Michael Pruitt.
Yes sir.
I live in, off of Wanda Co-condaway, uh, more closely related or associated with, uh, the first project that was mentioned. Um, and the question I have for the council, and I'm not, I'm not up on how do all these processes work and everything, but it seems to me the greatest heartache has to do with the fact that we're trying to annex and zone all in one fell swoop. There's a lot of people that seem, let, let's annex the property because we want control. But why are we trying to ramrod the, the zoning all in one fell swoop? Because if you annexed it, half of these people would then have a vote. They would be part of Monument and they would have a vote. But right now, the people that are making comments, they have no vote. They, they don't have any comment. They, they have no they can't contribute to what you guys are doing. We can't vote for you. So let's annex the property so that you all have control over it. And it gives everybody out here who is currently in the county an opportunity to vote for the council.
One minute. Yeah, no worries.
Okay, so from my perspective,
Sure.
Zone, uh, let, let's, let's annex, but let's table the zoning.
Hello, my name's Opie Pilgan. I live over in, um, right off of Doughwood.
Here you go.
In.
If you want to give me that. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Have multiple concerns. I recognize that we all bought up here knowing what the current zoning was. The developer also bought knowing what the current zoning was. I ask you respect our rights as people that bought over there with current zoning. Primarily next to Doughwood is 20,000 square foot lots. Let's keep the 20,000 square foot lots. I had the privilege to meet with the developer and I appreciate him showing up, but 20,000 square foot lots are 20,000 square foot lots. And let's get into a phased approach where the building makes sense. Let's keep it above a quarter acre. Let's keep it towards a half acre. Let's get common sense into our building. Let's talk about schools. Our schools already have problems with overcrowding. We have bond issues. We have multiple issues that we have not even addressed with all these additional homes coming in. So that being said, I think we really need to look at the overall development plan of the whole area and the whole annexation. Let's look at schools. I haven't seen one person from the school board or D-38 in any of these meetings. That needs to be addressed. Next, water. We've beaten that to death, but I haven't seen a good status or a good study that shows how the water is going to be accurately affected by these decisions. Next, we've talked about crime. Well, let's talk about community services. Police response time. I'm all for Monument coming over in support in the annexation. Monument can provide support better than the county can. But what is the plan? What is the plan with the county and Monument to have a comprehensive um, security or law enforcement presence in the north part of the county? All these need to be addressed before we build one single building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, if you want to put it there. Yeah, I didn't know it would stick there. Please.
All right. So I, there's a whole lot of stuff that's already been said that I, you know, had my little list when I came in tonight and most of it's been covered. But I do want to say I've lived here and I'm in Wakanda Hills. My name is Laura Lucero. Um, I live on Wakanda Way. There's not too many of us that are speaking from the west side. But I think we are definitely consistent with the people on the Woodmore side. It's out of, out of characteristic for our neighborhood. I have an acre. I, I have one of the smaller lots in Wakanda Hills and Colorado Estates. And so to put this high density does not fit with the characteristic of the neighborhood. I don't see that there's an advantage to Monument. I have learned tonight the difference between annexation versus zoning. I didn't know that. So thank you all for educating me. I came in saying, no, 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 no to everything. Now I'm going, hmm. Okay, yeah, annex might be good. Zoning, no, don't change the zoning. Keep it at multi-use and whatever else is on there. And let's work out a better use for the property than high-density housing. Like other people have said, we know they bought the land to develop in some way, but let's not destroy the wildlife habitat. Let's not have a negative impact on the, on the tra- traffic on Beacon Light. Cause even with paving, um, I brought some pictures that I would like to have put into the minutes of this meeting. These are pictures of my section of Beacon Light where you get into Wakanda Hills. And even though this development is farther north, that traffic's still going to come down Beacon Light to one oh five. And it's already really sketchy being a pedestrian. Um, cause I do it and I ride my bike to get over to the Santa Fe Trail. There's no ease in it. Where do I ride my bike? I ride my bike on Beacon Light. You know, where do the kids walk? And there's a bus stop there. Where do they walk? On Beacon Light because there's no other place. And so there's, um, I get these turned out.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Perfect.
I think I saw in your materials, there's going to be two hundred and ninety-two additional students estimated coming in. So that's almost three hundred. The original zoning, I believe, estimated a hundred and thirty-one students. So we are doubling. And just in case some people didn't read all the materials and see the exact number, two hundred and ninety-two might even be conservative. You know, so we, we are going to have an impact on the schools. And I was curious as to why it said that the kids were going to go to Lewis Palmer High School. This is Monument Ridge. Why aren't they going to Palmer Ridge? Because it's way closer. Um, so I would like to know about that. Why, why does it say? And obviously that traffic study was done with a different kind of a development idea too. It had business and stuff and it just didn't even make sense. I also worry about people if there's a fire. What are the safety evacuation routes? Because we all know about homeowners insurance. Therefore, we're predicting one of these days we're going to be under the gun. So how are the people about?
Thank you, ma'am.
We already don't have.
I was waiting for you.
You're waiting for me. Last but not least.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Robin Wright on Doewood Drive. I'm also a business owner in Monument. And, uh, just like any business and, um, like these gentlemen, you know, this is a business for them. Uh, there's risk and reward. And to me, you know, when you purchase something, you know what it's zoned as. And so they're wanting us to take all their risk out of the project by saying, hey, I've planned it for multi-zone. I planned it for these, uh, you know, high density. And so if you don't, you know, uh, rezone it, then their risk is off the charts. That's not our job. Like we, we can't, you know, take all their risk away. They knew that when they bought it. And, um, back to the black sky, uh, ordinance and it's not just lighting, uh, stairways, but when you have high density, there's multiple parking lots there. And so all those parking lots are going to be lit up too for people. And if the people that live on that hill up there, um, there's no street lights and most people don't even leave their house lights on because of the black sky ordinance. So you're talking about revolutionizing and changing everything. And then the last thing is, uh, the look and feel that the gentleman was talking about driving into here. If you notice, there's a, there's a cell tower over on the west side. And when that was put in, it had to look like a tree. And there's, and it literally, and it does, it looks like a tree. And so that's, that was the, or that's, that's who we were. That's who we are. So why would we put three and four story, you know, or duplexes, however fifty foot high, it doesn't even go with how things were put before. So, um, this, appreciate it.
No worries. Thank you, sir.
Like you cannot go on I twenty-five. And if they paved Beacon Light, we lived here during the bomb cyclone and many semis tried to go down Beacon Light. And our neighborhood, we were actually stuck in Larkspur and had to spend the night in the fire department. But there were a number of semis that tried to go on Beacon Light and you are not going to stop any of them with the gate. They are going to go through these residential neighborhoods and they will be near all of these small, small places. And I agree with the lady with the, who leaves the shovel out. Like we had to go and help people just during regular storms, let alone what if another large storm hits. So, um, when we bought our house, they did say, oh, you get a lot of snow. They are not kidding. We get every east, west, north, south, we get every storm. We, the weather forecast is always wrong for that area. Um, I hope they have a good plan for snow removal.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment at this point? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, we're going to close. Yes, sir. I, I, I didn't say close. I said it slowly for you.
My name's John Lazarakis. I live over.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I, I don't.
Don, a little, little bit louder if you don't mind.
I'm trying to understand how the staff can recommend to you that to go ahead with this plan. When they talked about they still short fifteen acre feet of water. For the Mon- for out of Monument. And I didn't hear anybody from, um, Woodmore Water and Sanitation. There's not enough water here for any of this development. I've sat on several water boards. I, I, I would like to hear how it, it, your staff says, oh, they, Woodmore Water District promised something and I, you know, so they checked the box. Montana Monument's short fifteen acre feet of water. What are you going to do about water? I mean, with the Denver Aquifers almost dry. The Dawson Aquifer is almost dry. The Rappahoe Aquifer, you gotta go down eighteen hundred feet in electricity to pull it out there. And that's almost dry. What, what are you? If you put in any high dense density, you can't afford, or is this the same planning commission that approved the density housing down by Walmart?
Is, is this it?
Yes.
That's the county.
No. What part did Monument, did Monument, when they, when they annexed, uh, down, down by Walmart?
I'll answer that question if this is the last comment. I mean, do we have any more public comment?
I'd, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to know how they.
Yep. And, and they're, they're writing down the questions. So we'll go back and answer all your questions.
How, if this commission is the one that approved that.
Certainly. No, we'll be able to answer that for you. A hundred percent. Thank you. Yes, sir. Is there any more?
Just got two things.
Yes, sir, please.
Into rental property very quickly because somebody is going to buy them up to rent them out.
Yes, sir.
The other part though is what does Monument want out of this? Everybody here, I'm sorry, people in Mon- but you can see where your neighbors. It's affecting us. It's not affecting the people of Monument per se.
Yes, sir.
What does Monument itself want out of this partial? I'd rather you annex it than the county take it. That trust you out more. But what does Monument want for these two partials?
Thank you, sir. All right, we're on the last question.
The clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
We are not, you will not be voting tonight on this particular project.
We're going to be talking about annexation and zoning and zoning. We're going to either deny or approve it. Then that's going to go to the city council and the city council will make the decision on this project.
So there's a lot still to talk.
A lot on the tie down. Yes, ma'am.
These fellows on how we're going to use it.
That's correct.
It's not being decided.
No, ma'am.
Perfect. That's what we just.
Okay. At this time, public comment.
No, Sheriff Tria, we have people online.
Oh, sorry. Oh, holy moly. Yes. Great job. We're moving on. We are now going to open it up to online. And at this time, Luke, you're going to be the one that is going to go ahead and pull those down if you would please, sir.
Okay. Anthony, you should be able to unmute and, uh, say your comment.
Okay. Good evening. My name is, uh, Tony Abler. I live off Baptist and Glen Eagle in Monument. Uh, and I'd like to give my perspective a little bit as a resident of Monument. Uh, I agree with many folks about the reasoning for coming here uh, because of the feel. Um, I do have a couple of comments. Uh, currently I count eight housing developments within the Monument Tri-Lakes area that are, that are going up. Uh, specifically within the city limits of Monument, uh, I count six. Uh, and at, and, and of those six, I've been to Planning Commission and City Council meetings regarding two of those. And again, I would reiterate the other comments regarding water, gas, electric utilities, uh, comments regarding police, fire and medical responses. Uh, because I happen to live literally half a block from, uh, fire station and I see how often they go out in this area. Uh, but then I would also look at the school, the, uh, for district thirty-eight, elementary, middle and high school. Uh, and the impacts that it's going to have and not one presentation, one slide talked about all of those. Uh, I think a few others had, had mentioned it as well. And so there is still a lot that the public needs known about this development. What I see from my perspective as a Monument resident is annexing this to protect the zoning and being able to have more of a control of what goes in that area. Because as a resident, I do like seeing the open spaces. Uh, I do like seeing that open area and, um, walking through some of that with my family as well. Because that's part of the reason why I moved up here and, and retired, uh, myself. Um, because I guess my question would be, uh, to not just the, the council or, or excuse me, the planning commission, but to the current individuals there in the room to ask that you are also at the city council, the, the city planners, uh, you're here, great. But for the city council meeting coming in July, please be there as well. And at this time, I would yield back the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Luke, we got you.
Yeah. So Brandy, you should be able to unmute and give comment.
Thank you. And this is Brandy Turner. I'm at two zero six five Bobcat Valley Court in Monument. And my comment is actually, um, about a comment that the applicant made where you said that you aren't welcome in Monument. Um, I believe that you're taking these comments and these concerns as not being welcome. But what I think really is happening is you're not looking at it from the perspective of the neighbors or of the community. If you stand on that piece of land, I don't understand how you envision this density that you're proposing in this rezoning. You have to understand this from the point of view of the people who this will affect every day. I think that's the biggest piece, honestly, that you are missing. You said that you came back and essentially you came back to us with basically the same proposal minus a few commercial pieces. But I don't understand how you can be surprised with our concerns, uh, the, the reaction of the community. If you come back with essentially the same thing you left asking for. Um, I would recommend that we do approve the annexation. Um, so that again, we have control over what goes through there. But I'd like to see some sort of condition on the rezoning to a lower density of residential. And again, to the applicant, you have to look at it from the heart and the soul and the day-to-day in and out, everyday living of the people that are sitting there around you. They care about their community and that is what you are seeing. Thank you.
Okay. As of right now, I don't see anyone else online. So if you have comment, you can raise your hand. Otherwise we'll move on.
Thanks you, Luke. We'll go ahead and give it a thirty seconds or so. See if anybody else raises their hand on the outer platform there. Nothing, Luke? Perfect. At this time, what we're going to go ahead and do, and we're going to go ahead and close to public hearing. I would ask staff, I'm going to ask, it's right now eight oh five. We've been going for two hours. Should we recess now or should we continue on and let people address as necessary and keep going? Very well. If you're all comfortable, we're going to keep moving on. Okay. We do have a couple of people that if you have to excuse yourself, please do, folks. At this time, uh, we're going to close the public hearing. Now we're going to go to the applicants, but we're going to close the open public hearing. We're going to go to start addressing questions. Staff, do we go, you want to go first or do you want to have the applicant go first?
I can hit some of them and then maybe we tag team a few where there were both have answers to them. Um.
If I could have the applicant come up here as well, and then that way as we're addressing the questions, we'll go down the list. You all both have been taking notes. Hit them by point by point, please. And then from there, uh, we'll address those questions.
Okay. The first one is why are we annexing and zoning at the same time? That's because that's what the statutes require. The statutes have strict requirements for the timeline between when you annex and when you zone. There is a ninety day timeframe in which you can get both of them done. Um, the other issue is within your annexation agreement, do you have a zoning provision? So if this happened to us last year, um, where you recommend a different zoning than what the applicant requested and the annexation agreement then nullifies the annexation and the zoning at the same time. So usually when people come in to be annexed, they want to know what their zoning is. Um, and so we do them both at the same time. And again, because the statutes require it. How can we recommend approval? This came around, um, from the last fall when I was here, that the concern was this was the gateway into the town of Monument. And this is something that the town of Monument should look to protect. Um, they came in, they didn't feel like they were well received. They withdrew. So the question was, do, they went to the county, um, we talked to the county some, and it was, do we let them go to the county where we have no say so in it? Or do we try to get them back? And when they come back, we know that we may not be a hundred percent in agreement with what they want to do. But it's, do we want them in or do we want them out? And that's why we recommend approval. We want them in and we're going to try to continue to negotiate with them and work with them to what's best for the town of Monument. But that is why we're recommending approval. Water, where does it come from? I can tell you that when they submit their applications, they do have to submit water information. Um, I, we have a town attorney, a water attorney who looks at that. We have our, um, town public works director who looks at the amounts. So that is where we get our information on whether or not they're bringing in enough water and if they aren't, what we can do. And that was where we came in with the phased plan about that. Woodmore is also, um, part of that distribution. So when an application comes in, it goes to Woodmore. It goes to the school district. It goes to the county. It goes to everyone. They get to read all the reports. They get to provide us comments on that. Um, so I will let you speak to the Woodmore part because that was a conversation outside of us. Woodmore Water and Sanitation and providing. Woodmore Water and Sanitation and providing adequate water to them for the project.
The property, all of the property on the east.
A little bit louder if you don't mind, please, sir.
Sure. I keep forgetting this isn't going.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you very much.
All the property on the east side is inside the Woodmore Water and Sanitation District before we even bought the property. They own all the water rights, they confirmed that story. And they have looked at what they are able to give us in terms of water. To develop this property in residential and or a commercial or a mixed use proposal. And there is, they're telling us that they have enough water, more than enough water for the number of residences that we're proposing in our development as the sketch plan that has been submitted to the town. We'll have to keep up with that with them. The more detailed planning will will help refine that, but we're as we have a service commitment letter for that plan from Woodmore Water and Sanitation District that was part of our application.
The other one had to do with police crime and sheriff response time. The town of Monument has an agreement with El Paso County. We utilize their nine one one response services and therefore our our police officers are also deputy sheriffs, so they can respond. We, there is one sheriff for this area. He's down off of Woodmore. So most of the time it's Monument Police who respond. So we are already responding. So if you bring it into the town of Monument, now we have the property tax to help offset those responses that we're already doing. That would be up to the police department to determine. Right now, it's based on what we have. So once those residences start coming in, then they would have to look and see if we need more. Yeah. I wrote down dark skies, but I don't recall what the specific question is, but I do know we do have a dark skies ordinance. So yes, we would be putting that into place as part of the site plan review, looking at the lighting, the glare, the direction of the light, the types of lights that they use. I do not think El Paso County has a dark skies requirement, but maybe they do.
Meeting that we had with the neighbors last Wednesday, we agreed that if lighting, streetlights and so on are required, we're agreeing to full cutoff lighting, so there's no horizontal broadcast or up broadcast of any kind of streetlights or anything like that, if those types of lights are required.
All right. Wetlands.
There it is. Okay, so the first slide back lines is the east side of the property, the white shaded area, folks, is what the historic mapping of the wetland areas are. It's the National Wetlands Inventory that is governed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And one of the requirements for both the county and or monument is to get a determination from the Corps of Engineers as to whether they, it is a regulatory wetland. Okay, so we studied the property with wildlife biologist and a representative of the Corps of Engineers and made a a submittal to the U.S. Army Corps for a determination of authority. They did accept authority of the of the map wetland, which is on the next page. And the revised white areas, the state highway department had to deal with it over here on the in the wetland actually goes out underneath the, thank you for pointing there. Underneath Monument Hill Road towards the off ramp, they had to get permits to worsen the highway right away there, but there is a part of piece of a wetland on our northwest corner. And then down in the bottom of the valley where the culvert goes underneath county line road, there is a wetland there. And our plan is to not touch them, not map them, not pay to have them relocated. Leave them in the open space as a part of our development plan. For those, that that area will remain undisturbed in our next, in our proposal.
But not the whole area, just the white areas.
Just the white. Well, there'll be more open space than what we're showing there, but the white areas will be preserved. We're not gonna go through the permit process with the Corps and make any modifications to pay to relocate the wetland to someplace where you folks can't benefit from it. And because there is that, this gentleman here mentioned that we could buy wetland rights. It's a two to one price cost for the value of the land to establish, and some of those places are cleared out in the wet mountain valley. And so where we could buy offsetting property and extinguish all of those wetlands on this property. And that's not what we want to do. That's not in our plan.
No, perfect.
Chair? Didn't wanna ask.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, why don't you put the development in there? Right now, all of the snow creates that wetlands. And so when you put all of the the buildings in there, how are you going to continue to have a wetland?
The wetland is even wet today. Snow or not, it's wet all year round. There's shallow groundwater in a lot of these areas. The soil is wet. We dug up the soil in the middle of the summer. It was wet. To do this mapping, the wetland won't go away. Yes, it is in fact beneficial to have the snow melt in there and we have to protect that wetland from stormwater runoff from the development, water quality. There's all regulatory requirement on anything we do in there to preserve and protect and along the life of that.
We're just gonna answer that question. We're not gonna add an additional question, but we're gonna keep going with staff on getting more, okay? Thank you very much, man.
Are you done with wetlands?
Are you done?
County zoning, the process, is it the scare tactic or the truth? So the county zoning is in place right now. So if they wanted to go in and utilize the zoning that is in place, they could do residential on the Misty Acres piece of the east side. They would not be able to do residential on any of that commercial. And then there's commercial on the west side and they would not be able to do any residential on that side. For them to do any residential outside of the Misty Acres PUD part, they would have to apply for a rezoning within the county. Similar process to what you're going through here. You'd get notice, you'd be able to go to the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners there. And then once they got, if they got the rezoning there, then they could do the residential. I I won't say it's not a scare tactic. The county does tend to approve what people request, as long as it's just not super crazy. But as you have a say here, you would have a say there. So it's the same process. If they wanted to develop in the county, what they're proposing to do here, it would be the same process in the county and you would be doing the same thing you're doing tonight. I hope that answers that question. There was a question about public notice. So the five hundred feet is a code requirement within the town of Monument. So any type of public hearing, we have to, you have to notify people or property owners within five hundred feet of the development. So that's our requirement. That's not something that they did. And then the public notice for the sign, we acknowledge that some of the rain washed away some of the writing. So I know Luke went back out to try to clean that up, but the hope the public notice was done correctly, but that is a code requirement of the town of Monument. So the applicant wasn't trying to shortchange the notice. He just met the minimums that we require. Schools. So we also send out information to the school district. The school district has the right to contact the town and say, we want land dedication or we want fees in lieu of land. And what they have said is we want fees in lieu of land dedication. They take that money, they either apply it to expanding existing facilities. They buy land or get land that's dedicated and then build those facilities. And then they can use that to hire more teachers. So it's up to the school district how they wanna handle land developments within the town and within the county. So again, if it's in the county or if it's in the town, the school districts are notified, they make the decision on how they wanna handle, whether they want land dedication or they want money instead. Effects on property values, that that's a hard one to say because zoning can change a property value for the person who owns the land that's being zoned. There have never been really good studies to show that one zoning or development will change the property on another because sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. So it's not an easy answer if this development is going to change your property values or not. It's nothing that we can really say. We talked about the roundabout already. Going through the there were a lot of questions about transition in densities. So I'm gonna let the developer talk about that.
Is a part of when we originally made this submittal, the properties along the back of Doe Wood were much smaller than they are today. That land is in fact today zoned in the county RS twenty thousand. The same zoning that is on the properties for the people that live on Doe Wood along there. When we withdrew, as one of the gentlemen here in the room talked about, we reached out and said, what can we do to address your concerns and get to a place where we can move forward with the project? And we agreed with them that those lots would be a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. And one of the things in the RA Zone District, while it sets the minimum, it doesn't put any kind of limitation on how big the lot can be. So even though the minimum lot size in an RA Zone, if it's not attached homes, but for single family deep attached homes, is five thousand square feet, we could put those fifteen thousand square foot lots in there in the same zone district. We have to abide by the same building height, we have to abide by the same setbacks, maximum lot coverages, all the other RA Zone District requirements apply, even though we're doing a bigger lot. The lots across the street are six thousand square foot lots. And then the space between the six thousand square foot lots and the realigned Misty Acres Boulevard is all open space, which includes at the north end to your right there, Luke. The wetland that I spoke about earlier, the dashed area would be incorporated, not further north, further to your right.
Mouse is.
Oh, you're.
Yeah. Only get on my page, but it's.
In in this area right here, folks, is the wetland. There you go. That will be that open space that that wetland also applies to the property owned by the Woodmore Water and Sanitation Districts, where their pump house is and they just built the well and so on. The other thing we agreed to do is on on our property along the backyards of the Doe Wood Homes, there's a trail. There'll be a trail. We recognize the desire to get down to the trails that you're gonna have to go, ultimately, it would have to go underneath the highway to get over to the U-Valley Trail System from this side. They won't let us over the Monument interchange. They won't let us get the trail up over the top. So it would have to go down underneath. There's a trail on the west side where Monument Hill Road is today, which would be vacated. That would become open space and trail and landscaped area. Misty Acres Boulevard too there. Then on the west side of Misty Acres Boulevard, which is the space between all of the lots to the south, the what the darker ones to the south, are all paired patio homes with a market value somewhere in the three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Market, market grade homes. These are not low income housing of any sort. Up in the corner at the top are where we're currently proposing townhomes. The actual geometry might change in the future. Once we get annexed, the actual density might change once we get annexed. But this is just the base zoning, which we're required to do, and we were also required to create a site plan. If you back up, I'll move over to the west side.
By identification of trail adjacent to. Yes. My my understanding and correct is from Brownview's. Monument Sanitation is gonna allow sixteen feet when they go on the pipeline.
I've already given them the easement for the pipeline, the water line. Yes, sir.
And then your trail goes beyond that.
Goes on top of their easement that we gave them for putting water line in. But that all happens on our side of the fence rather than yours. You've got the sanitary sewer on your side. They're gonna put the water on our side. On top of that, yes, sir. The easement is sixteen feet wide. The trail will be at least the ten foot standard that the trails and open face people ask. I'm sorry. This is the development on the west side. It does not have access to county line road. The C dot won't allow an access off county line road. It also has a trail and and berm and sucker around it. It's hard to see in this drawing. I recognize that. Those things, when we originally submitted it, we got comments back from town staff to add that information. We have the same obligations on that side of the highway as we do on the other side in terms of development plan, landscaping, buffers, trees, wildfire management, all of those types of things. What you do see on this drawing in the very right hand edge is county line road rather than up and down in the drawing on the right hand side. And then Beacon Light runs across the top of the drawing. Monument is not part of the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority and as such, the PPR TA project that's improving county line road and Beacon Light Road would die if we annex those streets into the town alignment. And there's a significant amount of your already paid tax dollars going in to fixing that interchange. That intersection will get lowered something around twelve feet below where it is today. If you're familiar with the church on the southwest corner of Beacon Light and County Line Road, that intersection's gonna be down closer to the level of the parking lot when it gets done. That improves site distance. There'll be additional lanes. There'll be turn lanes. Yes, it's going to get paved. There'll be drainage improvements, but that project also goes all the way down to when the road and takes the big Omsbowl out down there. And I and I recognize the concerns that there are with that project. We amended our annexation on the west side just recently because we were asked for additional amount of property that affects this site. And then the other part of this site is the water. The water would be provided by the town of Monument, the water department and and the town itself. Waste water is services provided by the Watton Monument Sanitation District, which is not part of the town of Monument. It's just the semi, it's just like Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. This zone district, we've annexed into that. We have to extend facilities to connect to that all the way down Beacon Light Road to when when Coman intersection. The first one there. That's how far we gotta go to get to sanitary sewer for this. The water shortage is based on point three seven five acre feet of water usage per water tap, which is the current water usage number that the town of Monument uses for any three quarter inch water tap. Doesn't matter how many people are living there. And that number came from a long time ago and doesn't recognize water wise restrictions. It doesn't recognize one point six gallon flush toilets. You can't buy a bi gallon flush toilet in this country anymore. So some of those numbers, we we know that at the moment, we it based on that shortage, based on their numbers, we're short of water in terms of what we'll be able to give them when we annex and we give all of our rights, all of our water rights to the town of Monument as a part of the annexation agreement. The rest of it will be, as Sheila has put in the staff report, we either have to adjust density or we have to get a better understanding of what the actual water. or we have to get a better understanding of what the actual water usage will be to close that gap. So we either got to lower the density where the water that's available to us by a dedication underneath this land to give to the town um, doesn't exceed what's available, or we recognize and work with the town of Monument on the amount of water that actually gets used in these types of, of homes. This plan is all paired patio homes. There are no townhomes on this side. And this is the maximum density that we're proposing. Um, and we've got a, we've, we've done a plan. We've got to go through the planning process with the town of Monument as the next step. But they asked us for a plan to show the worst case, and this is what we get. So I hope that answers water, um, buffers. Sheila, did I miss anything?
Yeah, was the transition on Beacon Light and decreasing a density?
Yep. Hold on a sec. Yeah, hold on a sec. Hold on a sec.
Yeah, I, I'll go through these, but I'll make, I think I have.
Go through all these, hold that question until, and I'll let you ask that question in a moment. Okay, sir? If that's okay with you, that way I can get through these, these questions first and see if there's any rebuttals for any of the others. All right. Thank you, sir.
Um, the roundabout, my recollection was that was originally proposed in the Misty Acres PUD, which was why it was, it wasn't, okay. All right.
Came, uh, Sheila, that came out of the pre-act meeting we had with the county. Um, and the, when, before we even ever replied to um, the town of Monument. And um, that pre-act meeting had CDOT on and an engineer from Douglas County, an engineer from El Paso County. And that they said their preference was for a roundabout for the traffic control of that intersection.
Okay. Lastly, who were the people who invited you back? And that was city staff. Um, once we had contact from the county that they had submitted or started talking with them, we have staff got together and talked about, should we re, reach out and ask them to come back again? And that's how that happened. No, no, town council did not invite them back. We informed town council that we were looking to invite them back. That's all we did. That would be, that would be staff. That would be the combination of staff meeting together, including city manager, talking about, would this be something that we should do? So it was for me to contact them and see if they were interested in coming back and start the conversation.
Um, I just wanted to address a couple of quick things. The gentleman pulled me aside and asked me what the kind of the logic or justification was for the densities that were proposing. And I also wanted to make as an aside, when David you used the term that the Woodmore Water was giving us the water, that goes along with the water development charge of between four and $5 million, depending on when the density lands. And then you get to build the infrastructure on top of that, and then you get to pay your tap fees. So nobody's giving anybody water, just in case people wondered about that. But in terms of the density, and I, I understand everybody liked to see, you know, five acre lots out here or something like that, but the.
Okay, guys, come on. We've, we've gotta go through this. Let's. We got it. Okay, but sir, please have some decorum. Let's, let's push through. Thank you very much.
Okay, so anyway, fair enough. Um, so based on the infrastructure requirements for the project, just the project in total, it's about 10 to 12 million dollars to connect all the roads, upgrade the various roads. I won't name them all, but you guys know from the maps what they are. And just from an economic analysis, um, if you do a, a low density project, you could never warrant building the infrastructure. I know people all think we're greedy and trying to make money and all that, and I like to think that we could make a profit someday. But it's this high risk business, as everybody knows, sometimes you make some money, sometimes you don't, you take your licks. But the bottom line is, is that if you look at the transition of the use and where the high density uh, is up against the, the freeway and you do a site distance to the nearest homes to where the density is significantly different, it's a very long distance between the Doe Wood neighbors backyards and the property where it gets next to the freeway and gets relatively high density. And then one other question people asked was about affordable housing, property values, things like that. I don't know when the last time you guys, everybody here built a house or bought a house here or whatever, but housing, building costs are extremely high. So I like to say affordable housing, but really the higher density houses are going to be in that 450 to 525 range. And then the, the houses that are closer to Doe Wood that back up just to make those lots work, to justify the expense to build those lots, those houses have to be in that 650 to 950 range and then potentially higher as people upgrade and things like that. So I just want people to understand kind of the scope of it. So when people use the term affordable housing, which everybody talks about wanting affordable housing, but believe me, nobody's for it, right? And um, so they're not really, they're not really inexpensive homes. They're just less expensive than the $950,000 homes that the people on Doe Wood live in, but there's a transition to it. And again, these are up against the freeway. And I, I challenge you, and I know the gentleman said, take a, take a drive with me down from Denver and see there's a million acres of open space that John Malone dedicated for a conservation easement. Got billions in tax write offs for that. Good for him. But I mean, if people want open space, there's no shortage of it. But uh, this project is zoned in the county. And I know people think we're trying to go around or usurp you by going into the county. What we did is we kind of threw our hands up based on the last county planning commission meeting you were here. It was not a, a welcoming committee. And we thought, well, hell, we're zoned in the county. Um, let's go try our luck with the county. We're, we're still subject to all the same public hearings. Everybody's got their input. And we go there, we try our best, we compromise, but we still have to justify building all the infrastructure. And no one's going to do a project to intentionally lose money, even if everybody wants five acre lots. You get the privilege of putting your dough together and buying the ground and building five acre lots. That's a beautiful thing. But they're still going to make you comply with all of the rules for water quality, protecting the open space and requiring open space, all of the fees, all the infrastructure, all that stuff. So it's mapped to us. This project, we, we think we have a fighting chance to make it work. Interest rates still at another point, forget it. Nobody's buying houses out there at 7% interest. Okay, 6% people are swallowing. It's a little tough. So there's a lot of risk associated with it. Maybe you'll see the project this year. Maybe you'll see the project in five years. I don't think interest rates are going down. I'm in the business. I watch the interest rates every minute of every day. It's my nightlife. Okay, I watch the 10 year treasury tip and that's the mortgage rates based on. Anyway, I don't want to waste any weird time. Happy to answer.
We'll, we'll, we'll address that here in a second. Yep, we're good. Real quickly, your, your question that you answered about, you know, what about the apartments, things along that lines? They're not talking about apartments. They're talking about this subject here. So that's a whole different subject on that end. Sir, you did have a question?
Yes.
That, that would be something that we would put as a condition if that is something that is needed. In this case, it sounds like it is needed.
No, that's not what I said. No, that's not what I said. P, uh, what, what I said was that the PPR TA has a project. If we annex that land, that kills their project. Their project, whether it's in the county or in the town of Monument at the moment, doesn't include sidewalk. That does not preclude them, the town of Monument, if we annex from requiring us to go out into the right of way in the county and putting in a sidewalk.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir.
We don't need to purchase the right of way. What we would do is build public facilities in the public right of way.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Did any other questions, any other, any other documents that you had, uh, filled out? Yes, I got them. Uh, Sheila, that you had to address, any?
No, I, I, I exhausted the list that I had, and I apologize if I missed any.
Your list is exhausted. All right. One question.
There are at least 25 feet. But the rear setback, there's a buffer and then there's a rear setback and, and it's at least 25, if not 30 feet, 40 feet in there. But that's from the property line. If that's, that makes it further than that to the edge of the road that, that they're improving.
2020, right? Yes. The only ones that were 2020, right?
So.
In 2020.
But, well, no, but we, that's, it's a great question. Okay, so again, this is the initial zoning. This doesn't give us the right to do anything except submit formal and it gives us the right to go into the town of Monument with formal plans, which has to include landscaping and grading and water quality and erosion control and building elevations and street plans and utility plans and the whole, that's all ahead of us. And in that conversation is wildfire mitigation, health of the tree environment, relocating trees, including giving trees to some of the town parks, picking them up and moving them and putting them in the parks that are already existent where the town wants trees. Um, landscape berms around the perimeter, the buffer that Sheila asked us to add all the way around both of these sites, um, this side and the east side that we, she had, asked us in her review comments to add. And so the, we're, we're very cognizant of the trees. Some of them are not healthy. Some of them are healthy. Some of them are way too dense. Some of them are fine. To the extent that we can save them, we will. If we can relocate them, we will. But we've got to increase the health of the forest that's there. And we've got to mitigate the wildfire um, interface, which is, is coming from the fire department.
Sheila, you good? Sir, you good?
Yes, sir.
It, it's a question that probably somebody on this panel is going to be asking. Good question. Last question, sir. I, I'm sorry, I can't hear him. Say again, ma'am or sir? That's a great question. That's something probably one of the commissioners will probably ask him. Are there any other questions? We are now closing questions. Nope, sorry. We got through that already. Too late. What is your question, sir? Thank you. Very well. At this time, we are closing. Obviously, we closed the public hearing. Now we're moving to commissioner questions and comments. Okay, so I'm leaving this to the commissioners. You have open forum to ask questions to staff, open questions to the developers to get some questions answered in relation to all the information that is before you at this time. So I leave this open to commissioners, please. Easy one on the far left.
Can you explain to me this 16 acre feet of water shortage? The hell does that mean?
In these terms, for every dwelling unit, you are required to have a certain amount of water. And they equate that to a foot above an acre. So one foot of um, acre feet is one foot of water in an acre. It's an old way of doing it, but that's the way we still do it. So when they did the analysis based on, I think it, I may be wrong on this number, but let's say it's 115 dwelling units. At how much is required per each three quarter inch water tap? It tells you how many acre feet of water you have to provide. They were 16 acre feet short. So as he said earlier, he either has to, he, I'm sorry, they either have to lower the density or find the water.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Commissioner Aigle, I had a question for the staff. Um, why the designation for zoning of residential attached versus PUD or one of the other single family?
The history, to my understanding, is when they first came in last year, um, they came in with a PUD. Staff at that time said, we had, I, the town had just updated the zoning ordinance and everything that they wanted to do fell within the residential attached zoning. So staff at that time recommended that they go with the straight residential attached zoning. So that's where it started and that's where we are today.
Can we request that they change that zoning to PUD? And if that happens, where does that put us in this process?
So yes, you can request, um, but that would require us to go back and reconfigure some things. Cause as you know, a PUD has more stringent requirements for submittals um, than what they currently have.
Question about the Misty Acres PUD. So does that, this is just for clarification. Um, if they are, we approve the rezoning, does the Misty Acres PUD just disappear?
So once the property is annexed into the town, all county zoning goes away. So that Misty Acres PUD is no longer applicable.
Quick question, uh, noise abatement. Gentleman had made the comment about noise abatement on those, uh, in those areas. Are there any plans for noise abatement associated with if that development? Now, I understand that it's a max density right now as you got it laid out. This is max. And I understand just the general plan that you're throwing up there. This is showing maximum. Would there be any consideration for the developer to look at something as a transference in between how the community sees a 1.5, 1.25, two acre lots where there is still substantial benefit to the developer? Okay, and that's, that's a reasonable answer. Yep, no, no, and that's, that's reasonable. Okay, then that's the answer I wanted to hear. My next question is, as the gentleman had mentioned, within the noise abatement associated with that, because again, even if we bring in that not necessarily high density, but a compromise in relation to what's there. Within that noise abatement or within that area, obviously, the consensus I'm getting, obviously, from the community is that obviously they want to preserve what they've got, and which, and rightly so, I agree with them. I guess what mitigating factors are there that would be considered, I guess, and again, without looking at down the line? There are certain things that we could probably come to concurrence with, with the public's understanding as well to mitigate that in the future. I mean, obviously you're here now and you're, you're willing to work with us. That abatement, though, becomes a concern just from so many different levels of noise, uh, crime, all the other pieces that possibly we're bringing into this area. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's, again, reasonable. Again, I'm not looking for the detailed plan right now. I'm just trying to get some consensus of what it is that you're looking for. Yes, sir.
Yeah, miss. The people online can't hear your response at this time.
So we talked about abatement. If you could just repeat what this gentleman said, so that way everybody can hear that, please for me.
I could probably do that.
Yes, sir.
In, in terms of the density and, and right, you've made the statement, this is a worst case plan um, to take a look at. Uh, infrastructure costs and obligations drive a lot of it. We need too much lower in the density. We can't afford the, the infrastructure cost. So that's one thing. In terms of noise and um, visual impacts, the landscaping, one example would be the um, the vacation of Monument Hill Road and not developing that property, but turning it into an open space with a trail, a raised buffer with some of the earthwork that we have to do, a lot of the trees that we need to relocate to do this development would go on that buffer. And so on that berm, so instead of a metal sound wall like we've got on I-25 further to the south, this would be a natural buffer with the existing evergreen trees replanted, raised elevation with natural seating and, and so on. And, and it'd be right along where Monument Hill Road exists today. So that's the kind of thing we're going in on the west side. Similar situation, raised berms, kind of put the development inside the, the raised berm, screen it and so on. And we're restricted to 35 foot building heights in the RA zone too.
Correct.
We can't go any higher than that and um, we'll be able to hide almost everything with these berms and the trees.
Correct. And that was my understanding of the 35 feet. That was, I just want to reconfirm that with you. So that's perfect. With that noise abatement, with that individual area, definitely understand. And I think, you know, again, we're not talking details here. We're looking at the worst-case scenario. It's not that it's going to happen, but again, we know the development's going to be coming there. My next question, though, would be, I guess, as we proceed forward, and let's say the zoning aspect right now, as we're already looking at this, the zoning aspect, we're looking at something that is multi-use. Right now, obviously, there's no density across the board, but even in multi-use, tell me about what can be done, I guess commercially, about the Safeways, about the other entities that are going to be needed in those neighborhoods just by the sheer volume of people. We're talking about just, and again, I'm sure you understand. I mean, the individuals are concerned about the population, and we all are.
I, I don't disagree. In, in, in terms of commercial users, big box type commercial users, which includes the grocery stores,
Yes, sir.
the King Supers, the Safeways, and so on. With no residential load development on north side of County Line Road, there is no demographic demand for those boxes at this interchange.
Okay.
They're, they won't come in, and they won't build there.
Yes, sir.
A gas station might. The problem with the gas stations, Maverick came in at one point, looked at the southwest corner of the, of the, on the west side. They wanted five acres in there. CDOT said no access off of County Line Road. Maverick went away. So there, there's some, there's a few things driving it. One is the demographics isn't there for a lot of the commercial businesses, the grocery stores. And I understand the need for that
Yes, sir.
in, in those populations. The other is access that we don't control, that Monument won't control either in terms of how that interchange functions and how you get access off of County Line Road into any of these properties.
Perfect.
Maverick actually looked moving over up against Beacon Light Road, right across the street from the church. That would have put every single truck across County Line Road, turn the corner down Beacon Light Road, and then into the intersection,
Yes, sir.
into the development. So Maverick went away just because of the, that just doesn't work.
Yes, sir.
And it's not the right place to put the trucks.
Correct.
So.
Thank you for answering that. Density, I guess the last question is density across the board. I mean, obviously, we're not making final plans here. We're not, we're looking at the annexation, we're looking at zoning, two different pieces, both east and west. Annexation makes sense. I mean, we want you in Monument. We want you, we want to control it. Well, we're going to tell you that straight up front. The issue is, is again, the zoning portion, that becomes a concern of the citizens. You know that, we know that, okay? We welcome you if the annexation was based on the community more so than the population or the increase of crime, variables that we and you and I, we can't control. You know that, I know that. I-25 is a safe haven for human trafficking. It's a route for commercial, commercial chemicals. It's a route for drugs coming from north to south. We've got more problems here than we, you and I realize. But putting that individual housing located right there on I-25, we already have those problems, but are sparking from Baptist all the way up to Jackson Creek. We have a smaller police force. These are my concerns, is that as we add more density, we're, we're, we're dealing with those problems. You're going to go home wherever that may be, but I want to make sure that you're looking at that from that perspective. We want to work with you. I want to work with you. I'm sure the staff wants to work with you. But again, we have to look at and take that into a heartfelt consideration. We want to make sure you're profitable as a businessman, there's no question. But behind the scenes, we have to take a look at it equitably. And I would ask that. I'm not saying to make that decision now, we're going to make that, that setup across the board.
One of the folks here made the comment that we were surprised by the comments and the concerns.
Sure.
I've born and raised in Colorado Springs.
Yes, sir.
Been here 69 years.
Yes, sir.
And this is what I've been doing for a living. This isn't a surprise.
Correct.
None of this is a surprise to me. But understanding what the emphasis is on all of the concerns, because there's other possible concerns. But until we hear from these folks and hear from you folks, there's no way for us to adjust, and they need to hear what we're doing. I mean, for a very long time, there was, everybody believed we were going to build apartments, and we never got a chance to rebut that.
Yes, sir.
It was a very long time before, and it was in the annexation agreement that we submitted from day one. We're not going to do apartments, but that word didn't get out. So the communication and the understanding works both ways. And myself and my team and my owners and the town of Monument have some work to do.
Correct. I completely agree with you.
We've agreed with Harold and his group to continue to meet.
Yes, sir. And that's exactly what I want to make sure is on the record, because I agree with you. I know exactly what, I was here. Okay? The gentleman over there had made a comment earlier. Woo was here on this planning commission when they had the apartment buildings approved. There was only two of us, and that was me as the chair. That wasn't a chair at that time, and Mr. Oars here, Chairman Oars. We approved that, that individual apartment building on Jackson Creek because it was the only one. Then the city council made the adjustments for all these other ones that came in. But that was after the old city council. So the best and interest in this community, we all have it. There's no question. You being here, trust me, there's some questions that have been lined out that a lot of people here are asking now, because yes, we're growing. How we grow, you have the impact. You are the ones that are asking the right questions. The question before us right now for the staff, and after Mr. Oars or Commissioner Oars makes a comments, the question is, do we annex east and west? That's two. We have to make two motions. Then do we zone east or west, or both? Okay? So that's what we're trying to figure out right now. What we do next, when we make the vote or we make the motion, we're going to make that, we're going to approve it, second it, whoever's on the chair or whoever's here. Is that the final decision? No. Then that goes up to city council. City council makes the decision, okay? What you're seeing here in front of you right now, folks, this is how every one of those planning commission meetings should be, regardless if you're in the town of Monument. If you're in Woodmore, you're up north, it doesn't matter, be here. Because this is what drives this decision. You're absolutely right. But you're starting to see, if we don't do annexation, what's going to happen is we may lose whole control. That's the hard part. That's where we're sort of right now, like, hmm, that's tough. Because if the city turns it around, or the county, and says, build multi, multi developments or builds apartments, they have every right to do it at the county. We have nothing to do with it now. Yes, sir. Okay, good question. Yep. Here we go. Yep.
Okay, so I was told to repeat the question. Why do we have to annex and zone at the same time? So the statutes require that when you annex, you do have to zone. There is a 90-day time period between when the annexation is approved and when the zoning can get approved. So that you do have a 90-day window. However, the issue comes when a developer and the town are working on an annexation agreement together, because the annexation agreement will state the developer is seeking X, let's say, let's, in this case, residential attached zoning. If the town doesn't approve it, then we can withdraw our annexation. So that is how annexations and zonings are tied together. The statutes require it. If there wasn't an annexation agreement, we would have like a 90-day window to kind of keep working through it. But in almost every case, there's an annexation agreement. And in that agreement, there is a zoning paragraph that says, if we, the petitioner is seeking residential attached zoning, should the town not approve it, the annexation is null and void. So that is why, and that's for the developer, they want to be annexed, and they want to know what they're getting from the town, just as they would if they were annexing anywhere else, so. No, that, yes and no, not, not a 90-day. You could do, you could do the annexation for Monument Ridge One and the zoning with that one. You could do the annexation and zoning for Monument Ridge Two and hold that one off, but they have to go together, the annexation and the zoning, because we have an annexation agreement that is binding them. Yeah. And that's, and that's common. It's across the board, it's very common for that to happen.
But what we make as a, what we make as a decision, we don't have final say. That's what I'm getting at, and that's what I wanted to make sure that everybody here understands. What you're doing right now, perfect, okay? We're hearing you, there's no question. But the main thing is, is that the city council is going to make the final vote. Everything that you've said here, if you say it there as well, trust me, they're going to be like, hmm. Yes, sir. We, we will give you a decision today before we walk out of here. We, sure they will. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Chair Trillo, Commissioner Green has comments and has had her hand up since it started.
Oh, no, please, yeah, I'm just waiting on you, Luke, to give me some guidance, buddy. Real quick, Commissioner Green is online, we're going to have a comment from her.
Commissioner Green, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to start off by saying that I'm familiar with annexations. Before retiring, I was in city planning for 30 years. And I have used the term, we need control, we need control of this land many, many times. But I do have a question. If the county develops this, where will they get the water?
So on the east side, it will be Woodmore Water and Sanitation. On the west side, it could be Town of Monument or Woodmore could bore under I-25 and provide service that way.
Okay, so they, they don't.
Oh, and sorry, there's one more option.
Uh, special district. Maybe, maybe they could drill their own well in a special district, but
Yes, that's it.
they really do not have the tools necessary to build right now what, what they have zoned. I, I feel like in, in a, oh, in a attempt to control this situation, we're giving away the farm. This is, in my opinion, not good and not good at all. In the annexation agreement, you have actually put this concept plan in there. And by putting the concept plan in there, you are putting it in a contract and saying, you can build this. I have never seen this before. They're, they're not being outside of the, the town. They're, they don't have entitlements yet, but we're giving them entitlements through this annexation plan and putting the highest density that you said you would allow in, in this annexation agreement is saying, hey, you can, you can just do this. I'm not real pleased about the fact that they're going to start their own metro district. If, if, just, you know, for homeowners, if we're providing the water and Monument sanitation is providing sanitation, then why do they need this metro district to pay for the infrastructure? Why don't they just pay for the infrastructure? I, I have a few more problems with the roads, with Pike's Peak Regional Transportation District. I realize they may be doing Beacon Light Road, but they have lists and timelines. Why did nobody tell us when that's going to be done? Do we know? Do we have a date? Do we have a year? Is it even on their list yet? It has to be on their list before they can fund it. That's a question.
Yes, it is. It was supposed to start construction in February. I'm not sure why it lagged, but it must have lagged for some reason because of them acquiring additional right-of-way. But they have design plans in place. They're, the last time I talked to them, they were starting in February, hoping to be completed within the year. But I know it's now delayed.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that's, talk about a control issue, that, that's kind of a problem. And that road, those roads back there, they badly need bike lanes. And they need to be redone, and they need bike lanes, and there are people all over them. And if you veer one foot, you're off in a ditch. So this is the time, this is the time. Annexation is the time when you could ask for those things and put them in a contract, and we're doing none of that. This annexation agreement, to me, reads as a subdivision agreement, which is something different that goes to people that are in the town and have some entitlements. And, and I, it's not that I'm against this annexation. I just think that we're, we're just giving it away. And, and this is the time you make the decision to set the, set the boat going straight. So, um, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Oars, please, sir.
Commissioner Oars. First comment I'd like to make is, a gentleman asked the question, how can the staff recommend what they've recommended? And let me tell you, I've been on this commission long enough to tell you that our staff does an excellent job of doing what they're charged to do. If you look at the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan specifies that when it comes time to land development, if land development is done, that's questionable. It should come to the planning commission. They look at the comprehensive plan, but that comprehensive plan is a very broad, a very subjective, in some cases, document. And they can't make all those broad decisions. But it comes to us as a planning commission to hear the public, to hear their presentation, to hear their presentation, and then we make our recommendation to the council. And the reason the council, and the, when the comprehensive plan was put together, wants that, because they're hoping that we can work things out here so that when it gets to the council, we're not in here 10 after 9 on the subject. That's what we're for. When he said that we were elected.
Appointed. We are appointed by the city council, not elected.
Okay.
So I misspoke, and I apologize. Appointed by the city council.
But, 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 but what I want to say about that, I'm here, and every member that's on here
Yep.
is here because we're interested in commute, in Monument. We live in Monument, too. We want the right things to happen. But this planning commission, just like our planners, there are codes, there are ordinances. We have to live within those ordinances until those ordinances are changed. So everybody is trying to do the right thing. I assure you, we're trying to do the right thing. Having said that, um, I do have some questions. Oh, Lord. Okay. First, I'd like for staff to tell me how incorrect or correct I am on this. If we deny this, and they go back to the county, does the county have public hearings with all these people?
Yes, well, it depends on the process, but yes. So if they were going through a rezoning, yes, there would be a public process. Right. And if it was similar to us, there are administrative processes. So like a, if it's already zoned commercial and they brought in a site plan, that is administrative. So if Maverick was going into the county, it's going through an administrative process, the same that it would here for a site plan. But in your zoning for a PUD, rezonings, and other things like that, it is a public process.
So there's a chance there wouldn't be a public hearing.
That is correct.
The only point I want to make. The, what we find our town and us, and the council's going to find themselves in, is how much control do we or don't we have? The county doesn't have to communicate with our council and say, are you all okay with us doing this? They're going to do darn well what they want to. In fact, they've already done well what they want to in some areas adjacent to us. So I think it's important to understand that first, I'm not at the point yet to, to vote yes for this, but I'm not at the point. that first, I'm not at the point yet to, to vote yes for this, but I'm not at the point to vote no either. I think it's our point, we do need to understand that we need to try to work with them, and we want to ask them to try to work with us to make this something that everybody can live with. And I'd rather for us to try to work some things out and get it up to the council and us get an annex and them do the right things than us to have to worry about, and I think they also have a concern, though. Planning commission for the county is appointed, just like the county planning commission here is appointed. Commissions change. Councils change. And so what they may want, what they see is nice now, or possible, might not be possible in two or three years. So nobody's got any for sure on either side of the street, but we'd certainly like to have it this side. My, my other question, that one's, I had a whole ton of them that I put together, but a lot of them have been answered. Okay. Under, this is for the staff. Once we approve this tonight, and it goes to the council, and if they approve it, it's going to come back to us to approve a plat. But we have no saying going forward from our approval tonight with regard to the conceptual plan.
Correct. The, with the residential attached, it's considered like a standard zone district. So the only thing the council and planning commission would see would be the plats. Everything else would be administrative. That would be your site development plan and your construction drawings and your building permits.
Our conceptual plan will be to who?
That conceptual, so there is a sketch plan part of the subdivision process, so that's what I'm considering, like your sketch plan, your final plat, your, um, preliminary plat.
So you would see.
You would see that.
Comprehensive, I mean, this conceptual plan before we.
But I don't want you to get that confused with a site plan, which is similar to your PUD. So, um, the sketch plan is more of a bubble, here's where we're going to put things. Whereas a site plan is very specific on where the lots and the structures are going.
But we are, and there'll be public hearing on.
On a sketch plan, I'd have to look at our table to see. I know there's public hearings on final plots and preliminary plots, but I don't know about the sketch plan. I'm assuming there would be. But I'd have to look that one up.
But, that being said, if we were to do it that way, we'd be stuck in the same pickle we were last month with classic homes, building those apartment buildings right there on Jackson Creek, where we couldn't make any adjustments.
Those were PUDs and preliminary final plots, so during the PUD, you could have made adjustments, but.
We tried to do that, but then city council changed that, because they made that decision.
Okay, and a sketch plan is a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just for planning commission.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, but let me say something. I'm not trying to get off track here, but I think this is important. All those apartments are going in on Jackson Creek because all, everything that occurred that we, we, the planning commission, didn't want it to happen. Okay? But here's the trick we got in. It came in, and it, a decision had been made at some point that we would review both a preliminary and a final, uh, uh, PUD, and when that happens, PUD, right, yeah, it was. When that happens, the developer comes in, all the detail, and they've spent millions of dollars sometimes putting it together, and it makes it very hard for our county, city council to deny it without possibly going to court. So it was a process error that nobody, I think, intended. Okay? Having said that, what we're trying to do here is avoid that. That's why I'm asking the question. Will we see the con, the conceptual plan and be able to make comments on it? Just as we see the conceptual plan up here, it's got buildings here, but those buildings may change to be something else. We'll get to see that and make comments on that. Is that correct?
I don't think to the level that you were wanting, because a standard zone district has set, um, lot sizes and setbacks, and as long as their plat meets those, their conceptual plan, their plat, preliminary plat, final plat, we have to approve them. So the sketch plan that you're referring to, which is part of the subdivision process, they would still be able to come in with the drawing that you see up there, that hundred and fifteen. And you could request things, but because it's an RA zone, they do not have to do them, because they have their entitled zoning of residential attached.
Hey, so that, I'm going to, is, is the attorney still on?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any legal way that the residential attached process can be changed so that?
Well, you would have to amend your zoning ordinance, and you would have to get that done before their annexation and zoning were done.
Take care of that. Okay, I've got a couple of questions for the applicant.
Allison, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I agree with what Sheila said.
Oh, she, she answered my question real quick.
Yeah, Kathy's got a question as soon as we're done. Luke, yes, so go ahead, Danny, please.
This may be a staff question, I'm not sure. In the draft, draft annexation agreement, uh, it indicated that you all had agreed to boarding, no, to remove boarding and rooming, manufactured home and multifamily dwellings, but I didn't see that on here. I didn't, I see, I still see on here manufactured houses. Huh? Okay, so I'm just saying, I'm wanting to make sure that what we see, whatever's confusing, that we're straight on.
Yes.
Okay? Now, with regard to this zoning, we can make recommendations to remove some of these sightings from the zoning, can we not?
Yes, you can make that recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so I, I would talk to the, is the owner leaving? Okay. Let, let me ask another question. Huh? Ask my question. Would there be agreement to, uh, now, this is just personal, okay? So I'm not saying that this commission's going to go along with this. I have difficulty with the, um, group home being in there. I'd had difficulty with group homes being built in that area.
Yeah, I, we would need the town attorney to weigh in on that one, because that is a very touchy legal situation.
Have the attorney weigh in on it.
Group homes are typically a protected, group homes are typically a protected.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to take that one out.
Can, can we, can we have a definition of what is a group home?
We'll let Luke read the definition from our zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Once we find it. Okay.
Okay, it's a long definition. So there's two types of group homes. There's group homes for the handicapped or disabled, or group home other. Both are, um, state licensed homes. The handicapped or disabled means a state licensed home for eight or fewer persons with mental or physical impairments, which substantially limit one or more major life, major life activities, and including such additional necessary persons required for the care and supervision of the permitted number of handicapped or disabled persons. Handicapped or disability have the same.